All right, you did.
Europe, quarter of Europe.
I'm gonna roll the thing over.
Thank you.
I'm driving. Honestly, it's not more than like nine hours.
Yeah.
Hey Pete.
Hey Carter, how are you?
Hey Danny.
Hi Steve.
Already good.
It's a good thing one of us is.
Took that line out, I was a little worried, but I took it out.
Gotta get a lot of cars out there.
What'd you say?
Wrap it up.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see if we can catch you in any mistakes this time.
Sure she would like that.
Actually, I think I did see on when I was looking at it online.
Yeah, I put it over.
I don't know where it was anymore though.
How are you, Mr. Snodden?
Okay there. Mr. Jennings.
Uh, did you get that copy of all that paperwork?
Yes.
Forgot to put you on the list.
You never expected that.
Uh, yes?
No. Yeah.
Uh, he had gotten from this, uh,
Yeah.
Treatment center, we're talking about seven of those groups. They had every, uh, health department form for the septic tanks and stuff that they'd ever done. He had all of those. And a whole bunch of other stuff.
Uh-huh.
And he left you off the mailing list.
Why'd he do that?
I just forgot. I, I, I noticed it today and asked him who did he done it, so he said he had sent you. So it should be in your email.
When, today?
Yeah. It's like five, five.
When you're working in Little Washington, you don't have nothing else.
Yeah, right.
You don't have, you don't have nothing.
This was like three documents and two PDF files. They're coming out huge.
Oh, you know what? Initially, uh, your name. And you wanted to be here for that.
No.
I know you didn't.
I didn't, I didn't like it because I had Mr. Moss comments. So that's, that day was probably, and probably you, you, did you, is your birthday?
Yeah.
Which one was that?
Yeah, so the last recording, it should be ten, five. Yeah, it's October fifty, twenty-three was the, twenty-two was the last update, so you did. How, how break your own?
Is it just a page or two?
Yeah, you can break your pages.
Okay, okay.
And you can replace it.
Okay.
It's all mine.
Well, I win all mine.
Yeah, okay, well, I've got it on here.
I usually like to start the same thing.
Because he knows about money.
Yeah.
Seriously. I'm gonna see a book.
And he's got the good.
About where it fits in, that kind of thing. And we don't have to take his word or not, I mean, we can listen to him. Tell us where he sees it, because that's what he does. And then, I just feel like here's only important, I have something to do. You know, I'm the expert on the, on the stuff, you know, would you object to that?
No.
All right, because he could be down the ways, so it's not gonna be long. Even if I haven't counted all of them.
Are they?
Build that into your question. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, if he wants to, to come on the phone, that's fine, but just for a workshop, I don't, yeah.
It was, it'd have to be clamped.
Yeah. I did a better job than that when I made mine at home.
Yeah, really.
I did, I, oh, when I, my original kitchen counters, I made them by hand myself, you know. And that glue does usually let the glue. Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, it was quite an honor. Yeah, it's quite, well, thank you. Not something I expected to have in my life. And certainly not something that I am.
Uh, other than the fact that there are more here, it's many people there, it's our own. I mean, we probably didn't have it, maybe seven or eight.
I'm a Williams.
Uh, otherwise, I think we're pretty good. It's, we're still gonna have to hold him through the fire on a couple things.
Yeah, much rough draft.
Yeah.
I have a feeling it's.
You mean the property's a claim?
Mm-hmm.
I have a feeling.
Yeah. And they, they didn't want to go back and talk at all about what we just fixed up, they wanted to get on the new stuff.
We've got it.
Yeah, I know.
It doesn't even, I mean, I believe it's, know that I'm not gonna mess with you.
Right.
That's what worries me. I mean, this is not the county.
And we haven't gotten any assistance in this stuff at all.
Yeah.
In fact, it's, yeah, except for that, and that's reducing itself, you know. It could be, it could be.
Just feeling that, you know, it's just kind of just.
Yeah, that's definitely a possibility, because there's a couple of the original group that don't, don't, don't think much of fool stepping. Anthony Klatterbuck, I suspect is short on patience when people are not being logical. Anthony Klatterbuck, yes. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, I was reminded that it's past six thirty, so let's go ahead and get started. All right, uh, we do have a quorum present, so we're in good shape there. Uh, we need to take a quick look at the agenda, see if we need to make any changes or otherwise to approve it.
Move to approve the agenda, is submitted.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Uh, take a few minutes to review the minutes from the May third meeting.
Chairman, give me one, one correction to the agenda on case A. Dr. Christopher Von Elton, not Etlin, I'm not trying to make him live in Etlin, he's an Etlin's with an A. Uh, to just please note that it's, it's Elton, so I'll change that.
Oh, we just swapped a couple letters.
Yeah.
All right, while everybody's looking at the minutes, I did notice on, let's see, I guess it would be, one, two, third, the bottom of the third page, uh, the last paragraph and the last sentence. Mr. Hellme spoke regarding the definition of clamping, of glamping. Uh, in that last line, it says, uh, most of the noise which would be is several through feet from any neighbor. I suspect that's not what it means. So, I think it was maybe several hundred feet or something like that. Yeah.
Move to approve the minutes, uh, with the one change. Chairman recommended.
Second.
Okay, so motion has been made and seconded, approve the minutes with the changing of that sentence to, which is, I think it was supposed to say several hundred feet from any neighbor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, as always, uh, with the cases, uh, we will read through the case, uh, Legan will address, uh, anything he wants to add there and answer questions. Uh, the applicant will have a, a chance to, uh, address the commission and answer questions. And then, uh, any public comment at that time will be allowed. All right, first case is case number SU dash zero six, zero six dash twenty-three dash zero eight. NWC Investments LLC. Dr. Christopher Von Elton has applied for a special use permit to operate a licensed substance abuse day center, day treatment center with overnight accommodations on a one hundred twenty acre A1 agriculture zone parcel. In the A1 zoning district, a hospital, clinic, or nursing home is listed as a use permitted by special use permit. Further, Article twenty dash one hundred defines a substance abuse treatment facility as a similar slash like use to a hospital. Treatment services shall be provided by licensed behavioral health providers with twenty-four, seven staff on site at all times. The subject parcel is the current location of the Seven Oaks Retreat, Retreat Center, and contains several buildings and structures, and five of these buildings slash structures are addressed. The parcel's principal structure has a postal address of four oh three Pathwork Way, Madison, Virginia, two two seven two seven. The parcel is identified on Madison County's tax maps as fifty-four dash fourteen A. Legan, anything to add there?
Sure, uh, so I'll just bring up the map of the, actual kind of camp, I think I have all these, uh, labeled correctly, uh, but anyhow, uh, this is scheduled for the June seventh joint meeting. Uh, you know, we did have a brief, uh, discussion about it last month, but we were pretty busy, so just wanted to kind of put it on everyone's radar. Been talking to, uh, Dr. Van Elton for a few months now about this. I did go out and visit the site, you see some pictures, uh, in your, in your, uh, in your packet. This right here is about a seven and a half acre, this constitutes the campus. And just to go back, if you're not familiar with the history of, uh, the Seven Oaks, uh, you know, meeting, uh, Ms. Sessingus. And, uh, her husband recently passed away, I know that they, kind of their life work in this, this campus, and it's just really a beautiful setting. And I've learned a lot about it, uh, as they started it, uh, when I was one years old. Back in seventy-two, right? Is that, that's correct. So just learning about the history of Pathwork, I mean, excuse me, of the Seven Oaks, uh, what their mission was and how long they were involved, uh, with their, um, programs, uh, I would say, I think it's fair to say in the last decade or so, it's really been more of a retreat, where different groups, you can even look at their calendar online, different groups, uh, come in and rent the facility out sometimes a weekend, sometimes for a week. Uh, and, uh, so they really have a, a pretty active schedule as a, as a retreat, uh, with these buildings, they, I think they have up to twenty-three bedrooms, they accommodate just around sixty folks overnight. Uh, so it was interesting just to kind of learn about that, uh, what they have brought people in here to Madison for, for decades. Uh, and a lot of folks know Madison because of, uh, Seven Oaks, uh, maybe, you know, all over the country, maybe even the world to a certain extent. Uh, facilities are very nice, they've, you know, walking out there and visiting, they're very well kept. Um, so now it's sort of at a, a turning point, uh, where they're kind of, kind of have a different mission, different folks who will obviously be involved in this where, uh, Dr. Van, Van Elton and, uh, Mr. Manning, that's with him tonight, have come in. So as a substance abuse rehab, uh, facility, uh, you know, I think I did send an email around that showed the Department of Behavioral Health, the requirements, uh, that, uh, they would be required to operate under which they currently operate their two facilities that they operate now. You know, I, I think you might have looked at the checklist, uh, from the staff to, uh, when you're dealing with, uh, patients, uh, with substance abuse, uh, you know, there are more regulations than that, uh, we here in the county could think of, uh, that they already have to follow. So look at the, the SUP conditions, which I think is really where this body comes in and really, uh, and the board, and have a lot of, uh, sort of latitude. Uh, you know, obviously, uh, if there's a wrong with the land, uh, in a fair to meet the conditions set forth, uh, would result in SUP being revoked. Uh, the second one is, as you can see, is this, in order to continue the SUP, we'd need to be fully licensed by the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, which they are planned to be and would be. But if for some reason they didn't have that, uh, then that would be, uh, you know, an issue with their SUP. Uh, we did, I thought it would be important, uh, to put just a, a number on the number of, of patients, uh, we have, uh, you know, we shall not exceed seventy-five outpatient, sixty of which could stay on the, could stay on the quote campus overnight. And I guess, again, all of that highly regulated by the Department of Behavioral Health. The last one, talking to the building official, um, just simply, uh, go through each building, uh, with Jamie before they open up their operation, and we would just get a, a maximum occupancy on each building. Uh, so hey, this building, you can have up to twenty people in it, and up to six could stay overnight. Uh, so, uh, the applicants don't seem to have any issue with that, and Jamie said it's, it's fairly standard, especially for a facility like this, they would go through and just make sure everything, uh, you know, as far as the code and, and really occupancy, um, you know, obviously everything was built to code, but the occupancy matches what they want to do, and it, again, don't see any, any, any real, any real issues with that, so. Other than that, I mean, Dr. Van Elton gave a nice summary of what they do, but I think the things that I forwarded, uh, to board Plan Commission, if you had a chance to read, you know, some of their internal documents and what they, you know, uh, protocols that they have as a facility, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot, that, you know, they have to, um, to, to maintain as a substance abuse facility. Other than that, uh, you know, letters have gone out to the public, um, Green County, folks across the river, kind of put a wide net out, I haven't heard any comments, uh, today, so. Other than that, do you have any, any questions for me?
Yes, Pete.
Steve, uh, Legan, I got a whole lot of questions.
Okay, good, hope I can answer them.
The first question I got is how much pressure does this put on our Sheriff's Department? How much pressure does this put on our EMS? What are we doing for security? Are these people level one, level four? Uh, these people that are coming here, uh, they stay in a week, two weeks? What benefit is this to Madison County?
Yeah, I think that probably a good question for the doctor, um, or, if, if he wants to answer that, or we can wait, or I know how you want to do it, I mean.
Yeah, let's move in order, yeah, we'll ask him that question when he's addressing us. Any other questions for Legan?
I guess I got one for Legan then.
Yeah, sure.
So, um, by counting the number of, uh, people that would possibly sleep, I come up with, I don't know, did he give the amount on two of the rooms there? But how are we gonna get sixty people in there overnight?
Well, it has, you know, it, it has tw- twenty-three bedrooms, so I talked to Jamie, that's why, I, I just put that condition that Jamie would determine an occupancy, obviously if Jamie goes in and finds out that, hey, you can only have fifty, that's what it's gonna be, regardless of what the condition sets, and that's the building official. So, um, I mean, I think that's what they're doing now, they're getting about that many people, uh, for different groups that come in. Uh, and it, it seems to, you know, as far as the occupancy seems to match, uh, that, so, but again, just as a condition, since it's changing hands, it's been an opportunity just to go through and, and have, and have the building official go through each one and make sure that, that that indeed, and I'm sure there's state regulations involved with this too, and how many they can have, and.
Legan, will these people come from Virginia or all over the United States?
Well, I, I had a guess probably from all over, but I'll, I'll let the, uh, applicants make, I think they're probably better suited to.
Okay, uh, quick question, Legan, looking at this larger overlay map, uh, is this Pathworks Way, is that still, it's a private road?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, it appears to be serving that neighboring parcel also, is that correct?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So it looks like there are three outlets on to the subject parcel and one going on to the neighboring parcel.
So they, these three, this, this parcel, this one right here, and that one right?
Okay, that's, I mean, that's still well within the private road restrictions, but that would mean that the adjacent parcel probably doesn't have many options in the future as far as using that road. Just curious about that. Okay, any other questions for Legan? Okay. All right, um, would the applicant like to address the planning commission? Thank you. Maybe just give us a quick overview and then be ready for answers.
Is this working? Yeah, my name's Dr. Christopher Von Elton, uh, I am a board certified family physician, I'm also board certified in addiction medicine. I, uh, started getting involved with substance abuse in around two thousand eight, um, my sister developed a significant alcohol problem. Uh, I actually came down to Virginia and, um, I was, um, I realized at the time just how little I knew about addiction treatment, addiction care, and how hard it was to, to find her, you know, local treatment resources, so, uh, at that point I decided to, um, get more involved with addiction treatment, I partnered with an addiction psychiatrist who's a current partner of mine, will be involved in the project, he's not here tonight. Uh, his name's, uh, Dr. Noel Jewell, he's been in addiction psychiatry for over twenty years, um, he's double boarded in psychiatry and neurology. And, uh, back in two thousand eight, we started a, a, an inpatient, uh, substance abuse rehab program on a, uh, there's about thirteen bedroom, thirteen bath lodge on a hundred acres in Amherst County, so we went through a similar process where we rezoned the property, uh, and got a special use permit to operate substance abuse treatment there. Uh, we operated the facility, um, we, we got licensed in two thousand eleven, we operated it for, uh, three years. Uh, the, the property was, um, acquired by the local hospital system, they were, they were sort of impressed with what we were doing out there and, and, and ultimately ended up moving their program from, um, from the city of Lynchburg, it was a Centra, uh, Centra Hospital System. So they, um, they actually took over the program and operated there for a number of years. They, uh, mo- they've recently moved back to their, um, to their current Lynchburg location, but, um, we didn't have really any problems, um, there were no complaints from neighbors, there was no, you know, significant, uh, law enforcement involvement, uh, no significant EMS involvement. Uh, I, I, I think it might be helpful for you to kind of understand this level of care, this, um, partial hospitalization is, is, the, the, sort of the simple word for it is day treatment. People come to us and they get a lot of, um, basically a lot of education and support from our behavioral health professionals. Uh, this is William Manning, he's a licensed clinical social worker, he's my clinical director, and he's currently over, uh, the partial hospitalization in our intensive outpatient program. Partial hospitalization is a minimum of six hours, uh, or minimum of five hours during the day where folks are under our supervision and getting a lot of intensive education and support. Uh, intensive outpatient is a little bit different, it's three hours, three days a week, and that's kind of designed to give people, you know, some, still some significant port, uh, you know, support during the week and kind of get them from day to day, hopefully avoiding, um, substances. So, um, so we operated this facility, uh, in, in Amherst, um, we, uh, you know, had a great experience there. We, um, there, there's no detoxification, uh, that's gonna take place at the program. All folks will meet with our physicians before they get admitted in, uh, to, and out to the facility. Uh, folks need to be medically stable and psychiatrically stable before they, uh, get admitted there. Uh, stable on medications, they'll bring their medications with them, they'll, uh, lock their medications in a locker and, and take them. Um, so, so it's, it's a, it's a sort of a subacute, um, level of stability for folks, there's, uh, when folks are in the, the partial hospitalization stage, they do require, you know, a little bit more intensive support. We plan on having, um, at least right now, we're envisioning having half of the folks there, maybe up to thirty, that are in the partial hospitalization program. But then also some folks who can, who can remain on campus, uh, and take advantage of the IOP program, but still be there. Um, that will be a much more stable population as they will have already gone through a thirty day program. So if folks can stay up to thirty days, they don't have to stay thirty days. They're also not required, um, by Virginia licensing to stay on site, um, but we, we really want to offer that. Currently, we run the program in Charlottesville, and folks who need housing, uh, we basically put them up in hotels and Uber them back to the program for the day. Um, so a lot of the folks that we take care of, um, have really difficult home situations, there's domestic abuse, uh, there's ongoing, you know, substance abuse. So it's, it, it can be very helpful for folks to have a more stable setting in which to obtain these more intensive services. So, so the point, to, to address your point, sir, uh, you know, the folks are medically stable, uh, you know, and, and cleared, uh, as, as per, uh, Department of Behavioral Health regulations, they need to be medically and psychiatrically stable to take advantage of, of that programming. To address the question about where folks will be coming from, uh, there is a paucity of inpatient or, you know, or more intensive services of this nature, uh, in our area, um, you know. So we oftentimes have to, uh, send our folks, you know, in the Charlottesville and around, and around the counties, um, and I take care of a number of people from Madison. We have to send those folks a lot of times out of area to, to, uh, to, you know, to obtain those services. So I think it'll be, it'd be, um, of a great benefit to the county and, and, and the surrounding counties to have an area where they could, you know, access local treatment. They don't have to go, you know, across the state. There is just a great need for this, I'm, I'm not sure if you guys have an appreciation for that, I'm not sure how many people on the board have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm not sure how many folks on the board, you know, have, um, you know, have had anyone that they've known or been associated with, or family members, or colleagues that have suffered from substance abuse disorder, but I think as I put in my statistics, it's extremely common. It's estimated that one in eight people in the state of Virginia would benefit from substance abuse treatment services. A lot of that has to do with, you know, and, and we don't just deal with substance abuse too, because we have, um, because we have, um, uh, because folks are seen and evaluated. Folks are also medically evaluated during the program. Uh, twice a week, they meet, uh, with our physicians, um, and that, that can either be onsite or via Zoom, uh, to, to check in with folks, uh, we check drug screens regularly, uh, we check on their mental health and support their mental health, uh, we utilize mental health medications if we need to. Uh, so, so folks are, are pretty intensely monitored per, you know, per Department of Behavioral Health regulation. And not only before they enter the program, but also after they enter the program. Did you have a question, ma'am?
Okay, I don't know about anybody else's history, but I don't mind admitting, um, due to family situations, that I am extremely familiar with what you're talking about. At this time, thank goodness, I'm not in need of, for a family member, but I have been all over, and I have been searching all over at various times for this help. It has been a long thirty-year process. And I can tell you, the places that we have been in, in, um, I'll be honest, North Carolina was fabulous. North Carolina offers a lot of halfway houses, a whole lot of, at least they did, I hope they still do, and some very good treatment centers, thirty days usually, sometimes up to forty-five. They are fabulous groups, places to be. I slept at night when my family member was there, which I didn't do when he wasn't there. And he didn't even have drug problems, just alcohol. So, we need this desperately, and if we ever needed more treatment right now, we are talking that we give Narcan to our high school students to be able to carry, so they can save a life. I mean, that's where we are. And I am very passionate about help. I'm very passionate about what you all can do. And does everybody succeed, does everybody, it's not the program's fault usually, it's the person. And it takes a long time sometimes to get to the point where they are no longer dependent. We have stories in Madison County, success stories, and I know who some of them are, and they're fabulous. And a lot of them did go through programs. It's, they're always well-run, they're always, the staff is fabulous. I don't know how you all do it. I don't know how you work with people that you work with and hear the stories that come from these folks, but they're wonderful people. And where my, my family member has been, has been doctors, lawyers, all kinds of people in there for treatment. Be shocked. Um, I didn't know who they were, but my son said, "You wouldn't believe," and it was my son, actually, I'll admit it, who is now doing, thank goodness, fine. But it is needed, I know what kind of facility you run, I know you're tight with the state. You're, you're supervised, you are, you have to abide by what the regulations are. At least I would hope so. And I don't think there's gonna be anybody overdosing at your place for EMS to come. I would doubt it, right?
Well, you know, we, we certainly hope so, you know, we, you know, we, uh, we will search, you know, a person and belongings when folks come in. Uh, since the, the ideal location here is that, you know, it's, it's got some distance between, you know, the, the facilities, the road. It should, you know, be a very good buffer where, you know, visitation, uh, is gonna be, you know, extremely limited, so... We don't anticipate there'll be any problems, we're, you know, we'll have trained staff. Folks will be coming to the facility with an Narcan prescription.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll absolutely do everything we can to prevent overdose.
But I do know about all the tricks too, of other places that have been managed not so well, maybe. So, I, I'm, I'm definitely knowing you're gonna be supported by the state and by us, and I think that we will in the county, it would be a great thing for us to be able to help other people right here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hello, folks, uh, my name's Willie Manning, I'm licensed clinical social worker and, uh, clinical director for Dr. Von Elton. Thank you so much, Ms. Lutz, for, for sharing your, uh, your story. Um, this is something we hear every day. Uh, Lauren, who answers the intake line, uh, spends hours every day fielding phone calls from largely family members of, of Virginia residents, uh, desperately seeking help. Um, oftentimes from the individuals themselves, you know. So, sir, to address your, your, your question regarding where are these folks coming from? The Commonwealth of Virginia, um, in largely central Virginia. Unfortunately, there are plenty of applicants in the surrounding counties that need help any given day. We would be open to others, but Commonwealth of Virginia residents and local residents would, would get priority, for sure.
That's good.
We are, we are planning on executing a thorough, uh, per- personal, appropriate personal and baggage check at admission for anyone who is taking advantage of the accommodations to ensure that there are, there is no contraband, no weapons, um, there will be no smoking on property, and we will, uh, obviously be vigilant, I mean, with all due respect, obviously be vigilant about the presence of narcotics or alcohol on, on campus, um, to be sure. It would be difficult at this location to, to have outside influences bring drugs or alcohol because it's, it is remote, and, and we have thought long and hard about protocols to ensure, uh, the safety of the residents. Unfortunately, not everyone who comes to treatment is fully committed. It takes a little while to get on board, um, and we, we have lots of experience addressing those issues. So, um, and we take that very seriously, uh, you know, uh, a- a- all of our staff are, are trained and licensed and appropriately credentialed. We also address very seriously the mental health piece that's associated with substance use disorder. Behavioral health is not just about using drugs or alcohol, it's also about what's going on up here. So, we're all trained in what is called dual diagnosis, which means we're gonna, you know, a lot of folks use drugs and alcohol because they're anxious, because of trauma, um, because of depression, so we're all, um, on board with, um, addressing that piece too. So, in a lot of ways, we're kind of like a mental health facility too, so, um, uh, I, I certainly wanted to address your, your, your question, sir, um, because they're very good questions. Uh, in the two years that we've been running this iteration of PHP in Charlottesville, I've had a handful of EMS calls, uh, none of them are, were overdoses, they were physical health issues, um, that are just kind of common amongst folks. And, uh, as Doc said, it's, you know, they, they happen, but we're not inundated with, with EMS calls, with, with law enforcement calls. It's actually surprisingly infrequent. Once folks get stable and feel supported and feel safe, um, the behaviors are actually, uh, you know, on average, overall, really, really quite good, the behaviors are, are very manageable, so... But those are excellent questions, and this is, these are things that we have, um, uh, not agonized, but we've, we have, you know, addressed amongst the team, you know, significantly as we prepare, uh, for potential expansion. Yes, so Doc is asking me, uh, so I, uh, I'm the clinical director, but that's in title only. I work every day, I run the groups, so I'm in the trenches. Uh, I am in charge of the, the behavioral health mission, the, the curriculum in how we support folks on a daily basis. The curriculum, uh, as a social worker, I am, uh, deeply committed to social justice and, and economic justice and what have you, and we're proud to serve underserved populations. The facilities that Medicaid folks go to in the Commonwealth of Virginia leave much to be desired. Uh, we, uh, I'm very proud that we have, uh, a curriculum and a program that is a cut above. It, it's, it's on a par or exceeds the type of program you would get at Betty Ford or a really expensive facility. It puzzles me why the facilities that cater to Medicaid, um, have curriculums that don't cut it. It's a puzzlement to me, um, there's a class, uh, you know, for example, if, if, if a local individual needed to go to treatment, they might end up at Galax, which is three and a half hours away.
Mm-hmm.
And you guys can Google some reviews of Galax and, and see what, what that's all about. This is not how we operate. My curriculum is bas- is evidence-based, uh, it is everything we know of cutting edge of science of addiction, plus a whole lot of common sense. Uh, you know, I think that's usually more appropriate than the science stuff. This is, you treat people well with dignity and respect, and they respond appropriately. And, uh, the Seven Oaks setting is, is, is not only analogous to, you know, like, it's in, it's, you know, it, it's, it's a really great match for our, our vision of how folks heal under, you know, under natural... I mean, the beauty out there is just, it's just phenomenal. So, it's just really conducive to healing and helping folks put their best foot forward. It, so in that way, the, the actual setting and the facility itself really matches our vision. When we went out there, we were like, wow, this place is where it's at. This is exactly what we need to fulfill our vision, which is a quality, affordable, accessible, you know, treatment program for, for area residents that, that need support. And it, it is secluded, which is, is also helpful. To be tucked away is, is really helpful for folks in safety and, and making sure that they don't, you know, have access to, uh, you know, the outside world, to be honest with you, so... It, it's, it, it appears to be a really good match with, with what we want to accomplish.
Okay, any other questions?
How many overnight people do you have over in Charlottesville?
So, um, you know, we've, we've put a fifteen-person ceiling currently, uh, because of the conditions, you know, um...
It's mainly from, it's mainly because of the facility that we have now. Our, our conference room really can't hold anymore than that. So, um, this is why we need, you know, we need to expand our facilities so we can help to take care of...
I was asking because when you were giving your statistics of how many times, how many medical calls you've had and whatnot, emergency calls, you, you're based now on about fifteen people?
Yeah.
And is that including the staff as well?
No.
Okay, so how many people, how many staff members do you have per patient?
Well, we, we, uh, you know, Willie runs our clinical programming, and we usually have another peer recovery, uh, staff person there, uh, who assists Willie. Since Willie's running the programming, they're generally involved with sometimes some documentation things, some paperwork, they help to organize the meals and Uber rides and, you know, get folks back before somebody tells. So, um, and they also help support folks if, you know, if during, if during group, if they're having a difficult time with, you know, a particular topic or something, and need to step out, the peer recovery person can go with them and, you know, and help them work through that, you know, so they can back it up and... So, um, I don't want you, I don't want you all to get the impression that, you know, that we just want to go in there and, and open up sixty beds, okay? You know, we, we, you know, I'm committed, when my sister passed away from alcoholism, I swore on her deathbed I would take care of as many people as I could possibly help. Um, our mission is to help anyone in our communities who needs, regardless of their ability to help. So, you know, we very much plan on opening very softly, and, uh, you know, we currently take care of fifteen there, so if we're gonna have fifteen acute folks and, and attending those folks from the, you know, from that PHP level of care to the IOP level of care, usually we have a very good idea at that point, after working with them for thirty days, uh, you know, what kind of shape they're in, what kind of condition they're in, and if we move them over, that person, uh, who's staying there is going to be a, a pretty stable little bit. So, I don't want you to get the impression like that, we just want to open up and fill this place with sixty beds. We're not gonna fill it until, you know, we've had an opportunity to run a smaller amount of people and then make sure that we're operating it, you know, effectively, efficiently, safely. Uh, so, you know, I'd, I, I think I mentioned to Ligon, I talked to Ligon when he was asking about the numbers. We don't anticipate operating, you know, more than thirty people for the first year, getting, you know, getting a thorough understanding of the, of the facilities, and any problems or concerns that we're having out there at the time, modifying our policies and procedures appropriately to handle that. And only then will we expand, probably forty-five in year two, and if everything's working out well, you know, expand up to sixty. So, um, so anyway, that was our, that's our plan, you know, you know. Our plan is not to get in here and just, you know, fill it up. Um, we want, you know, safety is our number one priority. Most of our policies and procedures are, are built around keeping our population as safe as we can, and, uh, so... So, as far as the overnight goes, um, you know, there's at least four different dormitory settings, so... We anticipate having a peer recovery person in-house in each one of those dormitories overnight to assist the folks. We'll have an additional peer recovery person who's living out there, along with an onsite maintenance person who's living out there. Uh, so, uh, as well as an administrative person who, uh, who will be close by. Uh, and we'll be on call twenty-four seven for any, any issues, uh, you know, out there in terms of...
So, it sounds like you're gonna have two people live.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be there every day, and we'll have two licenses.
Over, for overnight stays?
Yeah, but, well, yeah, yeah, correct. So, if we're operating, you know, if we start with one small women's dorm and one small men's dorm, there'll be, uh, and one overnight person in each one of those, in each one of those dorms.
So, how about if somebody decides, okay, I've had enough of this, I'm leaving? At twelve o'clock at night? Is there any protocol for that? Can they just leave? Is there anything that says, "I'm taking off"?
We're not a jail, so we can't, you know, we can't keep people against their will. If they decide they want to leave, they can, they can leave, uh, program, you know, if that people leave the program, you know, certainly you ask. Generally, we have a pretty good idea. It's unusual, I think, that we're not aware that someone's not, you know, having a good experience, or having more, isn't engaged and, you know, involved in, you know, their care and potentially wanting to leave. Uh, sometimes we recommend that people leave, you know, because they're not making progress in the program, and at that point, um, some folks need to move on to like a fully inpatient level of care. And that's generally, an inpatient level of care is when you're actually housed in the same building or services that are with them. Uh, so, yeah, so, so it goes both ways. I don't suspect, you know, if, if, if someone's generally on the verge of leaving because they're unhappy, um, you know, we'll help facilitate getting them, either putting them in Uber or getting them, you know, pick them up or, you know, whatever. But if someone, I suppose, wanted to storm out the door and, and walk down the driveway, not to the highway, but there's, oh, no, they could do that.
I do have one question, do you all have, uh, uh, court-ordered kinds of treatment? How does that work?
Yeah, so, um, uh, a, a lot of folks are on, on probation, a lot of folks are, uh, have open CPS cases, and treatment is mandated or recommended. Uh, everyone who comes to my, to our program comes of their own volition. We, we, we don't have the ability to enforce any sort of mandate. They have, you know, informed consent, which means they, they can choose any program they want. Um, so, uh, the reality is, is that, yes, a lot of folks have that mandate, uh, it's not from us. They're free to leave at any time, and the, the consequences they face if they leave treatment, that's, they understand that. Part of our, part of our education is to help folks understand that, so, um, I will, I will...
So, we don't have to keep them if they're behaving in a good way?
No, no, yeah, so, we have, we have very, you know, very firm boundaries, behavioral boundaries, um, safety... I'm, I'm a social worker, the safety of the community is, is every bit as important to me as the safety of my patients. So, we are not, you know, we're not mandated to keep anyone if it's not appropriate. And I will tell you, the reality of treatment is, uh, even if folks are, are court-ordered, a lot of folks don't go, they'd rather get locked up. The folks that end up in treatment, there is a, there is an element of wanting to be there. Lots of folks choose jail over treatment, lots of folks. You know, that might be surprising, but, um, the folks that join our program, there is a degree of desire to be there, um, and that, that goes a long way. So, um, but the reality is, yeah, a lot of folks are in, are, are in dire straits legally.
Any other questions?
Oh, and, and, uh, I'm sorry, uh, it's almost always, uh, drug charges, uh, you know, it, uh... We, we strain for violence, um, yeah, I, I, I can't remember a patient that I've had long-term that, um, had been incarcerated for, for murder or assault. You know, it's almost always drug or alcohol charges that get folks locked up, that, and then go to treatment.
Other questions? Yeah.
So, I guess I would have another question, just because we hear about it in the news and whatever. So, if someone were to, to be diagnosed, you would already know a diagnosis, hopefully, you know, medically. For instance, if they had schizophrenia or something of that sort.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, you would know that, and, you know, we see all the really bad things that happen on the news. And unfortunately, the vast majority of the ones I know about are ordinary people like us, who just happened to...
There's a thorough assessment, um, for, uh, so you have to clearly, uh, where the diagnoses are confirmed, uh, that's usually by me or one of my licensed therapists. diagnoses are confirmed, uh, that's usually by me or one of my licensed therapists.
And sometimes it's substance-induced psychosis. So, you know, folks are using medicine, you know, it's, it's, it becomes, you know, psychotic.
Right.
They would not, you know, if someone was delusional or, or experiencing psychosis, they would not be cleared, you know.
Mm-hmm.
In, in ten years of IOP and two, two and a half years of PHP, I've, I've never had, you know, we call it SMI, serious mental illness, I've never had a schizophrenic person in the program.
Good.
They're not, they, they usually go elsewhere, Western State, to get treatment. And Western State's a separate hospital, is it?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, that's, that's obviously behind the, the DBDH requirement that folks be kept, be, be psychiatrically cleared ahead of time.
So how is this program paid for? Is it grant-funded?
No, um, uh, there is, um, there's Medicaid, Medicaid commercial insurance. Medicare unfortunately does not cover, uh, this, these levels of services, but Medicaid and commercial insurance plans cover, uh, IOP and PHP and residential levels of care. So, yeah, so, um, so basically, uh, folks come in, if Medicaid generally doesn't have to pay any co-pays or any of those lines, uh, you know, this is, uh, the pre-Medicaid fund. It's standardized throughout the state. So, you know, so the re, we just receive the reimbursement for folks who don't need treatment.
So if they don't have Medicare, whatever, they have to come up with the money themselves or have insurance to do it with?
Well, most of the folks we see have Medicaid or commercial insurance. We have accepted Medicare folks who have not had the ability to pay because they were in a program and needed, needed help. We have accepted folks from the community, uh, with the, with the ability to pay. If I've got my overhead covered, um, I, I don't mind taking those. You know, I don't mind taking folks who have the ability to pay. Folks need help and we have the ability to help, really, that's, you know, that's really good.
Yeah, we, we call it scholarshiping, uh, we, we do it quite frequently. Virginia's got great Medicaid and it was expanded. And Medicaid in, in, in Virginia does a, does a pretty good job of covering substance-use treatment, um, and that's a good thing. Uh, it's, it's free, free treatment for, for the folks.
Right.
Yeah, I want to emphasize that, you know, one of the things I want to emphasize is that we're on, you know, we would be owner-operating. So we're not a, you know, some of these big treatment programs are, are conglomerate investment, you know, type of situations. This is not, this is, this is us operating our own business. So, you know, just want you guys to know where, you know, we're, you know, both of us are already heavily invested in making sure the program is successful.
Y'all have heard of pill mills? Clinics that just run people through. The treatment centers that are like pill mills are run by major corporations and they just run people through.
Absolutely.
No, no follow-up. We support folks long-term, not necessarily on property, but long-term, we know what common sense and research shows is that the longer folks are supported, the better the outcomes. And the, the, the cost to the tax, you know, yeah, Medicaid is taxpayer-based and, and the treatment is paid by taxpayers. However, when folks don't get treatment, it costs the taxpayers a lot more, uh, a lot more. You can Google, you can Google the, the stats on how much substance use disorder untreated costs to town of Virginia per individual. It's a lot. Uh, emergency room visits are ten to fifteen thousand dollars apiece and that's where folks go during crisis. So when they're in treatment, it, it, it actually significantly lessens the burden on law enforcement, on EMS and on local hospitals. And I worked at UVA Hospital for years and I saw what, what happens. Every day, folks come in with drinking and drug problems and they're not treated, they're, they're seen and then, you know, discharged.
They go back to, they go out on the street.
It just costs a ton of money, a ton of money.
Also with our, you know, operate, um, sort of our main health clinic is in Charlotte, also operate a clinic in Pittsburgh and just opened a branch in Fisher'sville. So the folks, the folks who are there and are from our central Virginia area will also get follow-up, but they will have the availability of follow-up when they leave the program, which hopefully, you know, will extend their, you know, success. So some folks go to inpatient treatment and come home and don't have any follow-up, you know, and it's pretty easy to, 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 so we'll have the ability to support folks, you know, even after they, you know, they're, 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 they're.
You used a couple of terms, uh, IOP and PHP.
Yeah.
Would you elaborate on that for us, please?
Those are the acronyms for, uh, PHP stands for partial hospitalization program and that's the day treatment program. So that's six hours, five to six hours a day, uh, treatment. And then the IOP stands for intensive outpatient program and that's three hours, three days per day.
Okay, so this facility would do both?
Yeah, and, and that's important because the inpatient level of care is, 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 is the highest level of care. And my job is to determine whether an individual is appropriate for outpatient level of care, which is what we do. So if you, if you need inpatient, you will be going inpatient, not, not coming to us. So there is a lower level of acuity and with that acuity come the behavior. So inpatient folks are kind of like the, the heavy hitters. We, we by definition and by, by licensure are required to make sure that the folks that come to our programming are appropriate for that level of programming. That's a large part of my job in the assessment process. So it's kind of like leading folks out, so to speak, and, and trust me, they're, you know, unfortunately, and this is tragic, but there are, there's no lack of, of applicants. The phone rings all day long. And, you know, we understand that, you know, we, we refer many of the phone calls to inpatient right off the bat, um, because we can, you know, Lauren can just tell, hey, listen, it sounds like you need to call inpatient, um, because we-
Or detox.
Or detox, yeah, and we're, we don't do detox.
Yeah, detox.
You need to be, you have to be stable when you come to us, um, which means, you know.
Since we don't, since we don't have an inpatient detox facility, we generally, if folks, if we can't get them into an inpatient detox center, we'll generally detox an outpatient. So we'll work with them out of the office for a period of time, like, you know, potentially medication-assisted treatment, getting folks around opioids, onto the physician-assisted treatment, uh, or getting folks who are on alcohol, uh, you know, detoxing outpatient benzodiazepines, if they're pretty much able to come out on the standpoint before they were in the program.
A lot of that self-preservation, um, my, me and myself and my, my other therapists, in order to have a, a level of sanity at the job any given day, folks have to be behaving well. So we have to stabilize, you know, they have to be stable, otherwise it's like herding cats, right? So, um, there's a lot of work that's done before anyone ever gets to our program and making sure that it's, you know, safe. So, yeah, like, you know. I have a vested interest in making sure that it's the right folks coming.
So, so this is a, like a step-down level, the, where you would not be looking at potentially violent cases, et cetera?
Yeah.
Or still-using cases, hopefully?
That's the exact version we use. A lot of folks are, you know, um, will have already been in a program and are using either IOP or the day treatment level as a step-down level. Some folks, it is their, their entrance into treatment because they are, they're moderate, you know, moderate cases.
And this is also monitored by Medicaid and insurance plans, so, um, we can't just admit anyone to these programs. We have to call and speak with the case manager. We have to review the details of the person's clinical situation and get approval from both Medicaid and commercial insurance plans for this level. And then, and, and even then, you don't get a thirty-day, you don't get a thirty-day stay. It's, they may, they may authorize a week of treatment and then you call the case manager back and you review the case. Is this person making progress? Are they still appropriate for this level of care? Or do they need to step down or they need to stabilize, step down to, less restricted level?
I do all that insurance work, all of it. Like, all the authorizations. So anyone who's there has, has been vetted, not only by me, but also by their insurance company. And, and they are vigilant. Insurance company is vigilant.
Are your, is your client base primarily adults or are they juveniles or a mixture?
We don't, uh, we wouldn't be taking care of children.
No juveniles, okay.
Any sort of children's licensure would be a whole other level of, a department of behavioral health oversight. I may see folks, I may, I have seen some folks who are under eighteen in the clinics that have been, that have been, that have been in this facility.
The, for those who you would plan on coming in during the day and then going back, you say staying in a hotel or something like that, uh, you talk about using Uber. So you're, they're, they're not providing their own transportation? So you would-
Yeah, we don't, we don't, you know, for their own safety, we don't want people coming and going from the program. So if they have a car or they're going to ask, if they turn their keys in. A lot of folks don't have transportation, obviously if you're, you know, activities and substances, you know, they're, they're, you know, you don't have your own transportation. Um, so, but Medicaid does provide transportation for folks.
It does.
It's provided, we know to set that up.
Well, what, what-
It's very easy for us to get, you know, folks transported to and from the program. But we just utilize Uber because we don't have our own, you know, we don't have our own, you know, we don't have a van, people don't stay in or-
Right, well, my, my point, my point was leading to primarily, the only parking you actually need there is for staff.
Pretty much.
Okay, so we're not looking at, uh, fifty cars parked on site, okay?
We, we, you know, this is hard to, you know, hard to engage, but we don't anticipate an uptick in traffic and there might even be less traffic. Yeah, you know, handful of cars, staff.
Yeah, I think, I think now, um, there's probably more traffic now, you know, one group coming in for a whole weekend, we're leaving after the weekend, a group coming in every week. You know, our folks might be coming in individually and staying for a long period of time, so I think there'll probably be a bunch of them.
Yes.
I got a comment and I, I understand that there's a real need for this. I don't have a full, full and warm feeling like Fay does, uh, but I will tell you that my biggest concern sitting here is the safety, health and well-being of the citizens of Madison County. And when we start talking about bringing these people, and I'm not saying they're bad people, but I see a lot of stuff on TV, I read a lot of stuff on Facebook, I see a lot of stuff in the newspaper, and that's not the stuff I want in my county.
Sure, sure.
I understand, I understand. I actually brought, um, I actually brought a, an article, um, it's a brief one, but it, it, it attests to the fact that actually they've studied this and crime rates and substance use percentage isn't any higher than, than, uh, anywhere else. And, uh, and, uh, you know, the, the, I know there was some, some concern from adjacent property owners that the property values would go down. And the studies on this are variable too, it completely just depends on location and some, some, in some places, program, uh, you know, the values have remained the same, gone up or gone down, so I can't really speak.
I would just like to say one more time, because I, I do have personal experience with like five or six prob, probably different facilities at various levels, like you're talking, you know, like you're talking here. Some intensive, some less, uh, works, work treatment facility in North Carolina, that kind of thing. I have never seen anything I was ever afraid of. I have never seen anything that I've ever questioned that wasn't being taken care of by the staff, including, you know, the intensive ones, like the one in Greens, um, Greensboro, North Carolina, that was a really good one. And it was unbelievable kinds of folks there, but they were so, I never, parents got to go, family, never felt uncomfortable, never felt threatened, never felt anything at all. And this, it's been years ago now, I agree. But, um, just, just ordinary people and you have to trust that the staff is gonna take care of them. And they need help so badly that I just don't think we're gonna see anything. I mean, I can, like I said, TV just doesn't, it shows the worst of humanity and it's out there, I agree.
Yeah, you know, I, I work with these folks every day and, you know, I'm a, I have a nine-year-old son and, and I'm, I'm a family man and I, I want, I, I want to come home every, every day after work, you know, you know, unscathed. I've, you know, I've never been assaulted, uh, I have a vested interest in bringing in folks that are, have extremely high probability of, of behaving safely. I, I don't want my, my, myself or my staff injured, I don't want, uh, I, I love Madison County, I've been, I've been hanging out and driving through Madison County half my life. I don't want, we don't want anyone here unsafe, um, that, you know, and we are, we have decades of experience in doing what we do. And, you know, uh, I, I suppose, you know, I suppose that, you know, we could, you could Google, you know, town of Virginia and, and check our record, you know, we, no citations, we've, you know, we've never been on probation for a, and we're, we're competent and, you know, um, safety is our, you know, you can't help folks in, in an unsafe environment, it's just not possible. So, you know, we do the very best we can to ensure safety and we've never had fistfight breakout in our clinic, I've never had a fistfight breakout in PHP group, ever. It hasn't happened.
It's better than public school.
Well, actually, I worked, I worked in the Charlottesville public school system and I broke up fights every single day.
That's right.
Every single day.
And obviously you will be, I mean, all of this is confidential for the persons, totally. I mean, I work with that too, so.
But sir, sir, I, I get it and, uh, like I said, I, you know, I want to come home every night to Liam, you know, intact, you know, so, uh, I take it as seriously, I think, as you possibly could.
Hey, any other?
I was reading one of the reviews earlier and one of the reviews had stated that there was some fighting going on and police had been called and stuff like that. I'll lead to the Amherst location. That it was, uh, it had been good for two or three nights and all of a sudden fights broke out, biting going on and police were called. Does that ring a bell to you?
Doesn't ring a bell to me was it, um, I don't have any, um, you know, I don't have any recital, you know, you know, this was, I got, I, I got out of the Amherst facility in two thousand fourteen. It was taken over by the central hospital system and they operated it for a number of years after that. I'm not sure if it was related to that. But I don't, I don't recall it being, uh, any fights or, like, you know.
I, I don't-
I was running, I was running for, we had, we had, we actually were, you know, again, we were trying to utilize the, you know, the agricultural nature of the property to against treatment, uh, for us. We had Virginia's first inpatient, you know, equine therapy program there. So, you know, we, and, and, you know, we, we just, we were trying to do the, the, the two people, they gave me respect and, uh, most of the folks that we take care of don't want to use drugs. They just don't know how to stop. They don't know how to stop, their lives are, you know, stressful and chaotic and they're generally using substances to manage-
Self-medicate.
Either self-medicate for stress or, or past history trauma or these kinds of things and they just don't know how to stop. So, so they need help and they need support and that's what we're trying to do.
Other questions?
Yes, Steve.
Well, then I should say, you know, I should say, like, I don't want to, I don't want to give you the impression a fight couldn't happen. It could. I don't want, I don't want to stand along and be, you know, here to say that if someone couldn't sneak drugs in and overdose, that could happen. This is a, you know, this is a, you know, population of folks and, and there are dangerous drugs, that's, that's another, you know, drugs. And, um, you know, again, like, we do the best we can to, you know, to help these folks. Generally speaking, those folks, again, they're not gonna, we're gonna have them stable on medication-assisted treatment, so hopefully they're not craving those drugs, they're not having to feel so much for those drugs. So it, it makes that managing that a lot easier.
Just wanted to thank, two of the things that concern me the most is why you would want to have up to sixty people there at one time and particularly with the staffing that you had spoke of.
Sure.
Secondly on that would be, I'm not too sure about the part where you say they could walk out at night, they don't have to check out and someone's not there to call them an Uber, they walk up the path, they walk up the road and knock on the neighbor's house.
There'll be, there'll be, there'll be people there to assist them at night, absolutely. Um, I didn't-
If they asked for it.
Correct, you know, it's, it's difficult to control the formal spectrum of community there.
Well, to, to speak to that directly, we, we, we have a plan to have, um, security system on every door. So if someone, there's a curfew at, what, nine-thirty? And if someone leaves, if someone leaves a dorm cell, there's gonna be a buzzer that goes off. You're gonna be aware of it. And, you know, best believe that, you know, we would strongly vigorously oppose any harebrained scheme to, to leave in the middle of the night, in the middle of the country. I mean, that's not safe. So, um, what Doc is saying is we, we don't have the legal authority to hold people, that's like, you know, you can't do that.
You can't do it.
But, you know.
But we do want to, we do want to put some, you know, what Willie was, you know, part of our policy and procedure discussion is on the dorm panels to have, you know, maybe some external video doorbell so we know if, if someone does step out during the night and we know who steps out during the night. So, um, you know, um-
And that would have worked, staff that's on, on site.
Hopefully, hopefully if someone was having a problem or an issue, the peer recovery person would be staying in the house and be able to help. Uh, they would be able to call in support from, from our, in, from the other, uh, you know, peer support person who's in there, they can call us, we'll, we'll, so.
Let's just create a scenario, okay? You've got sixty people there, and you've got two staffers there, and a guy-
It would never happen.
No.
So how many staffers would you have if you had sixty people there, when you were at max?
Uh, well, it would depend sort of what time of the day, it would probably-
Night, overnight.
Yeah, there would be, if there's four dormitories, we would have one peer recovery person in each of the dormitories, staying overnight with the clients. Uh, again, the, the client, there's gonna be a curfew, and, uh, and the lights out, and then, but that, that peer recovery person would still be in the house there, in each one of the dormitories, so if there's, you know, ten or fifteen people in each dormitory, there'll be one peer recovery person there. But there is another peer recovery person who's, who's living, who's gonna be living outside.
And this is probably mandated by the state, I'm sure, as far as your ratios and staff.
There's no, uh, in terms of the accommodation piece, there's absolutely no state requirements for that, the state really handles the, um, the, uh, the, the programming piece and, uh, and everything that goes along with that. Um, a lot of programs operate in this way, they're not unusual, okay, the Farming Center in Williamsburg, they have a, they have a bankbook apartment buildings, folks access day treatment during the day, and then go to the apartments at night. There, there's one person in the lobby there, there's, uh, you know, a number of people staying in the apartments. Um, this is something that we feel is necessary, appropriate, and safe for folks, to have a, a licensed peer recovery support person in each one of these dormitories to help support people after hours if they need it. We are going to be having evening programming there, uh, as well as the day treatment program, we're only required by the state to provide six hours a day program, so that's, you know, we're not gonna be supporting people and having evening-based programs, uh, there as well, which would be absolutely fine all the way, and then it'll be time for lights out, so.
So, but, let me finish my, my statement here, so this guy leaves, and I know that, I've read enough about this, that people relax, you know, do it over again. So the guy says, oh, I, I need me some more drugs, I'm gonna go down, down the street here to this guy's house, and I'm gonna get me some car and a money, and I'm gonna go get me some more drugs. You see my concerns?
Mm-hmm.
And with four people there and sixty people being there, this guy may be out of his head and not be able to be stopped.
We'll get to that point.
So, so, uh, first of all, uh, I, I, I have absolutely no conception of having sixty acute individuals there at any given time, that's never been part of the plan. Fifteen, uh, to start for the first year is plenty for me, uh, you know, that's a lot of work, uh, in and of itself, so, you know, our plan would be to expand potentially to thirty, but we, we don't have, we don't envision any more than thirty, you know, PHP patients at any given time, ever.
We, in terms of, in terms of the sixty you had in number, that additional thirty, again, might be for long-term stays. Folks who've been through the program who are more stable, but they may not wanna go back to, they may not be ready to go back to their dormitory, they may need some time to get into a sober living situation. Uh, so there's lots of different reasons why people may need extended time there, but it's not, you know, again, everyone who enters the program is gonna be medically and psychiatrically cleared, and then, um, you know, those folks-
And who clears them?
Myself and our psychiatrists.
Yeah, we have a psychi- well, we have a psychiatrist on site.
All I would say to that is, I, I understand Pete's concern, because this is so unusual, if you're not aware of what goes on, and how it happens, and who these people are, folks are that need this help. I hesitate to think what could happen any old time down on our streets, right now, and it's not gonna come from your facility. And those are not the ones that go out on the street in the cities, they're the ones that are not getting the help they need, they're not getting the support, and they're, you know, you're gonna evaluate the mental, that takes a mental pers- mentally unstable person, and you're gonna know that.
You know, working with people every day, we have a pretty good idea of how people are doing. Uh, we're obviously drug screening them, so we're knowing if they're actively using drugs at any point in the program, and we're working with them every day, so we know if they're making progress, we know if they're deteriorating. Uh, and we are, honestly, we are in constant communication every day about, you know, anyone that we have concerns about. It is literally, I won't say it's a twenty-four something job, but a lot of times it is, and we're, we're talking to each other, we're talking, I, not, not only about PHP group, and maybe folks in the clinic, um, you know, we have a, a messaging platform that's keeping, and, uh, you know, we, we, we talk about, you know, the, the concerns and that. We're always, we're always communicating with our staff, and, um, it's, it's a labor, it's a passion, it's a labor of, of, you know.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, you know we don't have Uber out here, right? You may need to buy a van, um, uh, yeah, that may, maybe an emerging market. Um, we did, John, Mr. Weekly and I both met with the sheriff this, uh, this afternoon, uh, he had some concerns, Mr. Weekly, please, and some of them have already been addressed.
Make sure I'm on, okay.
Um, yes, a lot of these questions have, have been addressed in some fashion, um, just a brief mention to the planning commission, and, uh, the two board members are here, I did speak with Dr. Van, uh, Elton, excuse me, and Mr. Mann, and before the meeting started, to let them know that that meeting occurred today, and see if they'd be willing to meet with Chief Hillstrom, our director of EMS, and our sheriff, uh, we might tag in emergency manager, Gordon also wears that hat as well. Just to go ahead and kinda have a roundtable to flush out some of these things, um, so, this might be repetitive when you meet with Sheriff Weaver or some of our other, uh, good first response folks here. So, security, uh, one of the questions, and I don't, I don't believe that the site is fenced now, but I don't know if you envision any perimeter fencing, things of that nature. I'm just gonna run through my list here.
Well, well, I don't know if there would be a need for that, um, you know, obviously, we, you know, in our policies and procedures, and in our, um, in our client orientation, and, you know, we will be, or actually is, you know, respect for the boundaries of the property and, and, you know, adjacent property owner. Uh, you know, certainly, uh, you know, I know that there's some fencing that's already up, I think, there's some proper wire and things in there that's in there. Um, certainly posting of signs, you know, uh, would be a very reasonable thing, property line, uh, you know, do not, you know, trust mass, what have you. Uh, you know, I know there was some, uh, some traffic concerns as well, and again, I think, you know, there was a request already to have the road widened, so, you know, I think, again, I think it would be very reasonable if there's traffic concerns, to do some sort of study on it, you know, as, as that.
Well, I, I think it's probably a VDA thing, they look at volume coming off that road or coming on to, to the Seville Road. Um, other part of security, do you have any plans, whether it's onsite or offsite, onsite would make more sense, but, uh, you mentioned a lot of personnel, didn't hear security, do you have any plans of having any onsite security? We realize law prohibits you differently, even if you had a security guard, like the one who used to sit out in Malvern, didn't have legal rights, but, uh, you know, different in law enforcement, but do you envision any security personnel?
Yeah, we, we, in, in, um, in all of the years that I've been doing substance use, you know, I have, uh, I can count on one hand, you know, how many times I've felt uncomfortable, you know, either in the office or treating a patient, you know. Um, Willie can probably attest to that, in general, it's, you know, our population isn't a violent population.
Right.
You know, most of the, most of the criminal activity has to do with supporting their, their drug use, uh, and, which, which comes from generally, you know, stress, and again, with previously mentioned, they come from stress, or, uh, or, you know, anxiety, depression, past history trauma. So it's not, it's not a violent population of folks, you know, folks who are committing violent crimes, which generally incarcerate for their crimes, and are served a lengthy sentence. Uh, so, I just happen to have that experience, um, I don't anticipate having that experience, Willie, would you wanna, you can, just, uh?
Uh, you know, I mean, our policies and procedures are, it's a fluid document that, you know, part due diligence is to address any given need at any given moment, um, right off of that, no, I, I don't foresee, you know, security is usually, you know, unless it's a prison, security is usually to keep outside forces, you know, like, from coming in, right, so, um, I, I don't see any need for interim security. Again, I've vetted out folks, um, in part of the assessment that I do with every single patient is a detailed history, which is verifiable, usually online, criminal records, uh, you know, for history of what is called assault and homicidal ideation, right? Um, if someone tells me, oh, yeah, you know, I did twenty years for malicious wounding, and I'm thinking about killing a bunch of people, no, they're not coming into my program, it's just not gonna happen. You know, uh, and interestingly, people who have those things usually verbalize it, um, I have a long history of, you know, treating mental health and substance uses disorder, including with some rough populations, um, uh, that is not the population that we invited to our program.
Thank you for that, a perfect segue to one of the other questions, um, I think you heard it maybe as a classification-type level, or just getting an idea of the types of substance levels, or substance abuse levels that you may be treating, so, is this more like a, I understand folks may not be violent that come, but is it a, you know, something where like a methamphetamine, where you're weaning folks off, is this, you know, PCP, is this lower level, like, how would you speak to the substance abuse levels type of folks you are treating?
Uh, well, we, you know, we can treat really any substance use disorder, again, folks are evaluated through a psychiatric, you know, person, really, um, so, you know, folks are experiencing will-do use disorder, we'll put them on stabilized, and then we'll do substance treatment. Again, alcohol use disorder, we would want them either detoxed in the facility, or outpatient detox, it's the same before they come in, um, methamphetamine, um, there generally isn't a whole lot of, uh, sort of medication-assisted detox for that drug, it's mainly just stopping the use of it, and letting folks, you know, kind of heal from that.
So is there a medication component where y'all have, on, in-house, that the medication helps them wean off?
Well, we taper them during the program, um, use of medication-assisted treatment, generally a long-term investment, um, it's really hard, any meaningful behavioral change takes time to implement, and so, you know, after folks have been using substances for a long period of time, um, you know, my experience has been, if you're utilizing medication-assisted treatments, you're only gonna get acute and non-medication-assisted treatments, so they, so they aren't, you know, craving drugs, or, um, you know, looking for drugs, they can actually get their lives back in order. Uh, they can reconnect with, you know, with family and friends, they can get back to work, uh, and after they do that for a period of time, um, and they may be ready to taper off the drugs, but there won't be any tapering going on at the facility. Folks will, you know, again, folks will be evaluated, they'll be sent with medications, those medications will be locked in lockers, uh, there'll be times when folks can go to their locker, access the medication, and then, um, but there won't be like the nurse there administering the medication.
Okay, but, so there'll probably be like an intake screening portion where it establishes, hey, this person's coming in, this substance, and you understand the medications that they are-
They would be seen, they'll be seen by, by our physicians, they'll be, um, provided with prescriptions for applications to, to, to anticipate for them.
Okay, is this facility replacing your Shawesville facility, or it's a complimentary of?
No, we're, we're moving operations.
Okay, is that due to this gives you, uh, I think in your license here, it shows bed capacities, I think you spoke a little bit, or this would give you some more? Expand it up, okay, track it.
From my perspective, it's just a better place to, to, to treat people, it's, I mean, instead of a conference room, it's a, you know, gorgeous rural property, I mean, it's amazing.
Right.
It's stunning.
This one may be more, is the question more a clarifying point for the good of the, the group here, um, uh, but, so this is a private facility, license under the Department of Behavioral Health, so I'd ask the gentleman before the meeting started, sometimes you have operations such as our current CSB operates too under Department of Behavioral Health, but generally they are tied to planning districts, this facility would not be, hence I'm, Mr. Elliott's question, who would be your client? In a planning district, that's established with region you would serve, so this, I just wanted to bring some clarity on that, that was a question, but you had already answered that. Um, so voluntarily, someone wants to leave, obviously they leave voluntarily without issue, you're not calling for service, but if something were, obviously, which could happen in a domestic case, uh, the, the idea would be nine-one-one would be called, and our resources would come to respond to whatever the situation may be. Okay, um, I think that's all the questions I have for now, again, we exchanged information, so I appreciate that, I would just encourage sometime between now and early next week, we can find some dates of availability to get our first response team, and I'd be happy to provide a summary of that to Mr. Webb, who distributed, um, so you all have a good comfort of what our first response team, uh, following may be, so that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other?
Thank you. I got one more, Steve.
Yes.
Um, we've talked about, and we're gonna, I know you've stated multiple times that it's, uh, first year you're gonna do fifteen or thirty, and kinda stage it up, um, using your sixty person and understand, um, we've talked about, uh, four staff on at night, what's, what's the staffing level during the day?
So, so let me, let me clarify, uh, four sounds like a pretty low number to me, I mean, we, we, we have two caretakers, uh, twenty-four-seven, uh, baseline, and, and one of them, uh, s- uh, licensed peer recovery support. Uh, we would have at least four credentialed, uh, uh, peer support folks, you know, for, for, you know, per, you know, one per building, plus, um, during the day, multiple, multiple treatment staff. Um, so four, you know, I mean, if we're, you know, if we're looking at sixty folks, you know, at some point in the future, uh, I wouldn't be comfortable with four, four people there, I mean, it would, it would, that sounds like a very low number to me. So, and during the day, um, what that looks like is, and it, you know, we have an admin person who's also peer recovery support, and what peer recovery support means is you're a licensed, professional, um, uh, substance use disorder, uh, practitioner, but they call it a peer, because it's somebody who is in recovery themselves, right? So, uh, it's a level of service, it's a lower level of professional service, but it's, 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 it is licensed and regulated by the Commonwealth, uh, and it tends to be a really helpful model, uh, because it's like folks helping folks, um. So during the day, just on any given day, say Tuesday, you got me, you got the admin person, two caretakers, and at least one other licensed person, uh, at, at any given moment, uh, Dr. Montel or Dr. Jewell, or a nurse practitioner could be there, uh, you know, uh, doing the medical visit, so, um, say, for example, in six months, we've got fifteen patients, I mean, we could have, I mean, we could have seven, you know, there would be a high, you know, it would be a, a very favorable ratio, uh, um, again, I have a vested interest in, you know, in my own sanity, uh, if we had a lot of patients in several years, we're gonna have a lot of staff, uh, you know, it's a, it's a fluid policy and procedures, you know, deal where, like, you know, uh, kinda like field of drinks, right, you build it, they will come, so we get more patients, we get more staff.
Yeah, that's, that was one of the reasons for sort of wanting to do more of a soft opening, is to get in there, assess, um, I heard about the staffing, it's just that, it's just that, well, in the answer, you know, for the, like.
And I did understand that you will not be ta- you will not be detoxing anyone, that is a medical proceed- needs medical support, big time, and I know about that.
Correct.
So, especially, yeah.
We can get people stabilized pretty quickly for opioids and medication-assisted treatment, alcohol is a little bit of a different animal, it can be very dangerous to, to quickly detox, so, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that, that would be, that would require a different environment for a while.
Yeah, I usually send folks to Fredericksburg or Northern Virginia.
Right.
Tragically and scandalously UVA.
They don't wanna do it.
Nor Martha Jefferson has alcohol detox, uh, makes you go on calls to get them to change that, because they do.
They don't have a problem.
So, uh, so we send, we send folks hours away for that.
Sorry.
I get a lot of folks coming after detox, you know, you gotta make sure they're stable.
Okay, any other questions, Nathan?
Okay, Juan, guys, I think you're doing a gr- great thing for the community, um, Mr. Weekly, that's everything you're putting together, I appreciate that, that's exactly what I've been thinking this whole time, as I see these guys in the back of the room, not giving me anything with their facial expressions, is wondering what their, uh, you know, the first responders, uh, sheriff, EMS, prosecuting attorney, um, would think about this. So I really appreciate you putting that together.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm really proud of we, we all, and talking about it.
So that's good, I, I still, you know, if I was the guy, looking, who's the neighbor over here that's with that shared driveway, San San or somebody?
I'm here. I'm Dr. Phil Sanso, I'm, uh, a licensed psychiatrist for both child and adolescents, uh, a little year for about thirty years, and I, I, uh, I have a lot of questions that I, I feel like weren't answered very well, and, uh, I would like to say a few words on that.
Yeah, in, in a few minutes, we'll be going for a public comment, and that would be appropriate time for that, yes. Any other question or comment from the planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, I got, I've got-
Yes.
Just a couple of factual things, I was looking, listening to it, uh, so, how many different agencies provide oversight or in-
So how many different agencies provide oversight or inspections or audits or monitors? You got Department of Health, you got Department of Behavioral Health, I mean, the Health Department and Development Services, you've got the Office of Licensing, you've got Medicaid, you've got private insurance companies. How many others that are?
I think that's the bulk.
Is that most of them that provide?
I'm under scrutiny, rightly so, with the Board of Social Work. It's my, my professional license. I mean, not, I mean, I'm not in any trouble, I'm just saying they, you know, every year.
Department of Social Services out of Richmond?
Yeah, yeah, so every year I have to reapply for my license and take, you know, continuing education units. The usual hoops that, that one rightly so jumps through to, to maintain licensure.
Right.
More than staff.
Well, yeah. Well, my point is, yeah. So I, I take it that the level of, of service you all provide, and you don't need an operations medical director, an OMD? Or?
Well, I serve as, yeah, I serve as.
You serve as the OMD?
My partner in all services is a psychiatrician.
Okay.
And really, they're fundamental services.
Right. All right. Let's see. So to be clear, the, the clients that are on your property, you guys will not be administering drugs, correct?
Correct.
And they are not admitted there to, for lack of a better term, dry out?
No.
Because there's, that's done before they get there, okay? And then my last one, so I go back, and now, you said benefits to the county, a reliable source of tax revenue for the county of Madison. So what in addition to real estate taxes are we talking about, Ligon? Or? Is that not the extent of it?
You know, the real estate taxes, so that would be it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I would assume there would be professional, you know, professional taxes.
No, we, we don't have a business license.
We don't have a special.
We can create a special tax.
Add to the list, I would have noticed.
What's that? Okay, that's, that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other question or comment? Two quick kind of summary comments. One of the things we always recommend, especially on this kind of a special use permit, have you talked to your neighbors? Your new neighbors? And I, I see you have some neighbors here, so I assume you have been having some conversations about if they have any problems with it. That's always a recommendation. The other thing I think we've already pretty well covered, I think would be in your interest to make sure that your processes and everything align with the county's EMS. This is a rural county, you may be more used to a more urban emergency services setup. It's going to be more difficult out here. So it would be behoove you, I think, to do that pretty quickly. And both of those things, I would, you know, we'd normally like to see that done before we have to vote on recommendations. Any other comments?
Just got a comment, Ligon, that something was said a second ago, you know, we're gonna get tax revenue off of this, and in my mind, this is a business to a certain extent. That land is on day one, so the taxes are gonna be very cheap.
Well, they pay taxes on two point two, almost two point three million dollars in assessed value, that's the land and improvements. So, I mean, I guess there could be a change in assessment, I, I'd have to ask the commissioner, but I, I would imagine that would change.
I certainly anticipated paying taxes, I pay taxes and all.
I understand that, sir, but there's a big difference in A1 taxes and B1 taxes.
Well, I, I want you to know that's not why.
I understand.
That's not who chose this location to operate, for sure.
I understand.
I did, I had no idea, you know, for a couple of minutes ago, there wasn't a, there wouldn't be. That would be up to you guys as a, as a, I don't know.
Yeah, BPOL tax, most localities do have that, but Madison doesn't, which, I mean, I guess the businesses in Madison don't have a problem with that, but I, it's about seventeen thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes that it pays currently.
Any other comment? All right, in that case, for public comment, if you would, we would ask you to come to one of the microphones, identify yourself, and hopefully try to keep any comments to three minutes or less. Yes, sir?
Just hand him the mic.
Yeah.
I live directly adjacent to Seven Oaks. I've lived there for about twenty-five and thirty years, I guess. And I'm a licensed psychiatrist in both child and adult psychiatry. I know now that the state with all of the craziness that's going on in the world has increased funding for mental health, which is a good thing. But I don't think it can be taken lightly. It's, it's, I've run both units for alcohol addicts, I've run my own day treatment center, which I opened myself and which I staffed. There is many, many problems that I think need to be considered. I don't think people will just, I think it's sort of dreaming to think that folks will not, from time to time, try to run away or steal things or hurt people. I'm concerned about the, who's going to credit this place, and I am concerned about medical staff being available. The traffic is going to be another, another problem, but that, that is certainly solvable. Folks have said they've never been, they've never been hassled by patients. Well, I can tell you that in my case at least, or maybe it was just me, that I certainly have been. I've, they're, they, addict patients and a lot of the alcoholic patients have from time to time, when they try to escape or get away, we had, we had the ability to put them in quiet rooms if we felt like they were a danger to themselves or to elders in any kind of way. That was a very positive thing. It had to be regulated, we could only keep them in for three hours, and they had to be trapped, et cetera, et cetera. I, I have to tell you that the worst day in my life was having to go to the home of a parent and tell them that even though we had that, that person on watch every fifteen minutes, he had gotten away and run to a train track and laid himself on the track. It's something that I can never, of course, forget. There really is no fence between that place and my place. In fact, right in the middle of it is a, is a completely open area. On the rest of it, there's, there's some barbed wire that's, you know, mostly knocked down. It, I'm concerned with also the, the drugs. I mean, now, nowadays, drugs are just, you know, it's like everybody has them. I mean, every kid knows how to get them. So, you know, with fentanyl and all these other things circling around, I think it's, I think it's something that the county really needs to consider, any input on this place. We're not talking about Disneyland when you, when you, when you, you want to start a place like this. It's very serious business, very, very serious business. And staffing is something that I also want to beef up. I, apparently, there's going to be no physician on the property from time, for most of the time, that can be called in as far as I understand. But the, the medications are, definitely have to be very, 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 very watched and regulated. And I know that sounds like, of course they do, but you would be surprised what, what some of these people can think of, where they can hide it, and what they can do. There are, there's a whole lot of other things that I could say, and maybe we'll, we'll at some other time in some of your other, your meetings, but I, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about how this is going to impact the area. There are, there are people in, you know, not very far from us and from that spot, who, who would be, I think, more than willing to, to, you know, be involved with, with drugs in terms of, you know, sharing or whatever, if they ever got hold of, of, of people. So I, I don't know. I mean, I, I hear, what I hear is that this is just the greatest thing since, you know, white bread, but it isn't. It's, it's, it's serious, it's difficult to maintain, and it's, and it's a terrible responsibility. And I just think that ought to be considered. I know I went over my two minutes.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Susan Thasinga. I've lived on the Seven Oaks property for fifty years, and been a neighbor to Dr. Sansone for twenty-five, thirty of those years. We were, we came before the planning commission in nineteen seventy-seven, and we got a special use permit to run an adult education center as a private school, and we did that. We've been here that many years, since nineteen seventy-seven, paid our taxes, hired local people, brought a lot of tourists to the area, many of them, some of them settled here. As everybody knows, a beautiful county. I want to say that the main reason we got our special use permit was because we convinced people that we were sincere in what we were doing, and we would, and we believed we were doing God's work. I want to say, I am here not just as a founder and a resident, I, I own ten acres within Seven Oaks. So I'm the neighbor that will be most impacted. I believe these are good people, and I believe they're doing God's work. This is important work, and they know what they're doing. And I think all the questions need to be answered, and you can have, you know, some format for doing that, but the real question comes down to, do you trust these people? And are they doing something important that really helps people? I believe that was a faith that was given to us in nineteen seventy-seven, and I think we, we made good on that. And now we're ready to pass it on to some other people who want to do good work and help people live better lives. So I hope you'll see that in them as I do.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment at this time? Yes, sir?
All right, so my name's Judd Buchanan, and I didn't know this was happening tonight. I just got it late notice and decided to come over and check out all the hard work you guys do. Today at lunch, I drove up to the Hilton Cemetery and wanted to pay my respects to a guy that died way too young, fifty-one, alcoholism. And as I'm sitting there and walking around, I noticed a lot of gravestones of kids that were born in like, you know, two thousand or two thousand two, whatever, and died. Like, how did they die? There's, there's a lot of them up there. And I'm imagining, maybe I'm just imagining, that these kids died of opiate, fentanyl, whatever it is. There's too many in our county that are dying or having trouble. And to have something like this for them to go to, I think is amazing. I've lost people in my family, and I was in law enforcement for three years, I saw a lot of this. It's just, it's just no good. So all these questions are important, and they need to be answered, but I see it as a positive thing for the county.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment at this time? Yes, sir?
My name, my name is Kent Peterson. Sorry, I'm a little hoarse. I'm also a medical doctor, and I'm actually an expert in drug and alcohol testing. I've trained over eighteen thousand doctors around the country to deal with drug and alcohol tests, and I'm a specialist in occupational and environmental medicine. I have been affiliated with the Seven Oaks Retreat Center for over thirty years. I've served on the Board of Trustees and was the president of the board for many years. I got to know Dr. Sansone, our neighbor, and I just want to say, first of all, he's been a very good neighbor, and I think Seven Oaks has been a very good neighbor to him and to the other neighbors. We've had tens of thousands of people come through the Seven Oaks Retreat Center for their own personal growth and development. Many of them, those people had addictive disorders and were in the process of recovery and healing. In the twenty-five years that I've been affiliated with it, I'm not aware of any incidents that have ever occurred that have required EMS support from within the county. We have certainly transported people to local hospitals in Charlottesville, and I don't think there have ever been boundary violations with neighbors. So I believe that the people who came there for their own healing and their personal growth have shown for twenty-five years that they are an asset to, to Madison County. I know that this is a step up, but it serves the same need for people to heal and to become healthy in body, mind, and spirit. I believe that these doctors and their staff, whom I have known for a number of years, are ethical, they're skilled, they're competent, they have the best of intentions, and they will be monitored by Susan Thasinga and those of us within the community. I think there's a tremendous need in this country. We're all aware of the opioid crisis. It's not just opioid crisis, it's an addiction crisis. The number of deaths have exceeded a hundred thousand from substance use deaths in two thousand and twenty-two, and that number has gone up dramatically. And yes, fentanyl has been the major cause of concern. So it's a major social crisis that everyone wants someone else to solve, and I am grateful that you are willing to consider being part of the solution. I believe this will serve to the benefit of this county and to the citizens, most of whom are going to be from within central Virginia. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir?
My name's Ken Elias, I'm a friend of Dr. Sansone.
I'm a friend of Dr. Sansone's. I have sort of a general question. This land is all zoned agricultural. Will it be rezoned for business now? Is this a proper use in agricultural setting?
Okay, any other public comment? Okay. In that case, let's move on to our second case. Case number SU dash zero six dash twenty-three dash zero nine. On behalf of the Madison County Board of Supervisors and Emergency Services, Motorola Solutions Incorporated has submitted a special use application to develop a wireless communications facility, WCF. The proposed WCF will provide public safety radio coverage for the county's public safety communication system. The WCF would be confined to a leased fifty-foot-by-fifty-foot fenced-in compound located on a fourteen-point-nine acre A1 agriculture zone parcel. This parcel is located on a roughly zero-point-two-two mile, approximately twelve-hundred feet, private right-of-way connected to Churchill Road, Route six forty-three. Per Article fourteen dash thirteen dash four of the county zoning ordinance, WCF exceeding one hundred feet in height requires special use permit. The proposed monopole's height would be one hundred seventy-four feet, including an attached four-foot lightning rod. The subject property has a postal address of two-two-two Churchill Road, Etlin, Virginia, two-two-seven-one-nine, and is identified on Madison County's tax maps as fifteen dash fifty-five P. Ligon, anything to add to that?
Yeah, I'll just make a note. I think on the first, one of the first pages of the application, it states it's a hundred-and-eighty-four foot. Uh, that, that's, we'll change that. That, that's, it's, like the, uh, the ad says, it's a hundred-and-seventy-four feet, and that includes the four-foot lightning rod, just, just to make sure that's clear. So, o- other than that, um, you see the visuals, the full application. Uh, you know, you just kind of have the highlights in the packet, but the full application obviously is online. Um, I pretty much think where everything is, is been satisfied. And the few odds and ends, maybe we'll get in before, uh, the next packet goes up on June second, which is a Friday. But otherwise, um, I think some of the questions from the public, and Brian, Brian can answer these better than me, but have been, Brian's becoming an expert on cellular service, WCF. But some of the questions in the public that I've gotten are just, could this be utilized for cellular service? I mean, we know this is part of the emergency service communication system, and there is space for that. But, uh, whether or not, you know, the, the carriers have been notified. Uh, the hope would be that maybe, uh, some, you know, some carrier, private carriers would be interested in, in utilize that kind of co-location. But I'll let, let Mr. Gordon talk about that.
Yes, in fact, let's, let's go ahead to the expert person before we start asking questions.
Luke?
Yeah.
Okay. So, like Ligon said, the first page of the application did say a hundred-and-eighty-seven foot. It was a hundred-and-sixty-seven with eighteen-foot lightning rod. That's incorrect. It's a hundred-and-seventy-foot tower with a four-foot lightning rod, um, as we advertise in the balloon test. We'll get that fixed. This will be a monopole. It is not going to be a lattice tower. Uh, we do not have to have microwave at this, at this site. Matter of fact, it does not have line of sight. What we're going to use is a fiber backbone from Verizon, who we've already talked to them about. It is there, is available, and we can get that shipped over to that. So we're going to use that for backhaul instead of microwave. The tower's still going to be built for microwave in the event that a sudden other vendor needs it. Uh, it's already been approached from the Shandong National Park, and they're interested in it. So that's, that's our plan there. Um, other than that, the, the application i- is, is accurate. So I'll certainly answer any questions if anybody has any.
I think the questions are answered. There's nobody out there. I think the board and the, and you yourself have done a good job.
Thank you.
It went away. We're going to get a tower.
So this is not going to interfere with anybody's view of old rag?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I can see it from my house, but it's okay.
Shut the blinds.
I can see a whole lot of things. I don't like seeing it from my house.
Yeah, fr- from the, uh, from the pictures, it, it looks like it would be, uh, back dropped by the hillside behind it, which is totally forested.
Yeah, it's up against Delaney Mountain. Uh, you can see it if you're looking back towards that way. Uh, Mr. Foster, I went to his driveway. You're, you will be able to see the very tip of it if you go to the end of his driveway from his house. I can't imagine you would be able to see it. Um, some of the others can, but it's such low profile and it's tucked the way it is, it's very hard to see, according to the first.
Yeah. Can they paint it camouflage?
Oops. Okay, I have asked that question. I'm waiting on a response back.
So that doesn't indicate what color it would be?
Right now it's galvanized steel, non-reflective galvanized steel.
So that would, that's no maintenance or anything?
No, sir.
That would stay like it was?
No, sir. And, and what I've been told by people that have painted towers, what I've been told from people that have painted towers is there is maintenance involved where you have to go back and paint those things every X number of years. So that, that would inquire maintenance costs at some point.
Is there a, uh, being we have differences in the heights of this, is there a particular reason why it's a hundred-and-seventy and not a hundred-and-thirty or two-hundred, or is there?
We wanted to keep this tower as low as we could. Uh, right now, one of our antenna heights is at a hundred-and-sixty-four foot center line, uh, which, a hundred-and-fifty-four foot center line, which if we kept it under a hundred-and-seventy feet, would go beyond the tip of the tower and make it subject to lightning strike. Uh, so we wanted to beef it up and go above beyond that. But also by our ordinance, we have to be able to co-locate six tenants on this tower. And to be able to do that and get above the tree line, we have to go to a hundred-and-seventy feet. We could certainly go to one-ninety-nine, but we, in the interest of keeping it as low profile as we can in the area, we stayed at one-seven.
So thi- does this have a line of sight to Blakey or not?
It does not.
Does not?
It does not. That's why we need the fiber backhaul, correct. We had to come downhill roughly a quarter mile before we, we were to achieve that, which put it right back where we were, same situation we had before.
And it still works as good then?
Correct, yes, sir. Coverage-wise, it works good. We just had to figure out how to backhaul, the fiber achieves that, and we're in a good spot.
And this, and then this is going to achieve them being able to talk by walkie-talkie to the tower?
Correct.
It, it achieves all that?
Yeah, what I, what this thing will do is if somebody is in the Etlin area, they'll key up a radio with a fire EMS or sheriff. It'll hit this tower, it'll be backhauled through fiber back to our beautiful run site down on Mr. Brockman's property, and re-enter the system, hit the core, and then go out over all four towers. And that's simultaneous. So that, that, that's the design behind it.
So in other words, this is going to meet the county's needs?
Correct.
That's fantastic.
Uh, am I correct? This is the, the, kind of the last necessary part of the system?
Yeah, the other three towers are either newly constructed and built or ready to be installed on the new system. When we get this thing up and running, we'll be able to install, should be operational quickly thereafter.
Have you already done your cost analysis on it? Because I knew that was one of the things that was, why it was taken from the beginning.
Yes, we, we have looked at preliminary. We don't have anything hard, fast, but the roads are already there. Um, we may have to put some crusher on on one of the roads and put a ditch line or two in, but it's very similar to the first Churchill site with little or no construction. It's from a civil site.
Good job.
That's right.
Third time's the charm, right?
I hope so.
Any other questions? Okay, uh...
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, any public comment then? Everybody left? Oh, okay.
Quick question.
Yes.
Is there an aircraft light on top? Is it blowing up your ECA?
Yes, sir. No, sir. No, sir. If you stay below one-ninety-nine, uh, the FAA does not require a blinking light. We darn sure we're not doing that in downtown Etlin.
Okay, any other public comment? Downtown, yes. Thank you, sir. Yeah. Okay, uh, case number OA dash zero six dash twenty-three dash ten. An ordinance amendment to amend Madison County zoning ordinance specifically to add an Article fourteen dash twenty, fourteen dash twenty-one, and fourteen dash twenty-three to this ordinance. The proposed amendments would u- authorize Madison County to assess an annual revenue share fee on utility-scale solar facilities as allowed by Section fifty-eight point one dash two-six-three-six of the Code of Virginia, if adopted. The county would assess an annual revenue share of fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt for commercial solar installations with an increase of ten percent every five years. The adoption of this ordinance would mean that the county could collect revenue through this ordinance or through machinery and tools taxes on solar-related equipment for such facilities, but not both. Okay, Ligon, any additional comment?
Yeah, um, so we've been, have been analyzing the revenues and of a potential solar project. I know we, you know, we've delayed, uh, the, the hearing, uh, for the, the one on twenty-nine behind Yoder's, I don't recall it. But that, that will be delayed until, uh, July fifth. Still working on a siting agreement. I think we have everything done. I just want to make sure that we, you know, we've talked about this for two years. So another month to make sure the siting agreement and everything is, is where it needs to be, I think, is, 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 is a good thing so that applicant had no issue. Uh, the only thing is, is that if we were to approve a facility, it is my feeling that regardless of, this is not making any sort of judgment, as I said in the email, that, you know, by adopting this and putting it in our, in our code, it does not say, well, if you come forward, you're approved, that, by any means. As a matter of fact, the more I've analyzed these revenues with the eighty percent exemption that solar, uh, projects get from machinery and tools, it's honestly not nearly as attractive as it may be. I, I maybe naively thought it would be from a financial perspective and accounting. If they just paid regular machinery and tools tax, even exempted a certain amount, both the eighty percent exemption, it really sort of changes the numbers that we've been looking at, um, quite, quite a bit in, in reference to that one particular project. The only thing about, and again, I don't think adopting this, you know, having this in our ordinance, I think it makes sense. It's, it'd come right after, uh, our commercial solar fourteen-point-nineteen. Uh, one little small housekeeping change that, uh, in this, if this were to be adopted, is that fourteen dash twenty, I have fourteen dash twenty-one, twenty-two, and three. I think we probably just want to call it fourteen, Cardi pointed this out to me, so thank you. Forty dash twenty, then forty dash twenty dash one, forty dash twenty dash two, forty dash twenty dash three. That would keep it more in line with how our code sort of illustrates things. So that's just a small sort of change that we could just, you know, we could make, uh, the, the board or blank commission could just recommend as a change. And I, and I'll rewrite the ordinance to reflect that. So other than that, you know, again, just want to be very clear. Like, adopting this and having this in our code is a, is a good idea, but I, I still don't want to, um, necessarily say that it, it, it's an indication that, you know, that, that, how one might vote, uh, on the, the, the project that we know is coming forward in July.
Any questions on this related?
I'm just going to say, I looked it over. I don't really speak legal stuff too great, and so I'm assuming Mr. Gregg looked this over. It's all in compliance with...
Well, this is actually kind of a collaboration. Uh, we've looked at this. You'll recall, we talked about passing a revenue-sharing ordinance as soon as we were allowed to, which was about two years ago. Um, based on conversations back then, and I think candidly, it's because we fully understand how much of a giveaway this program is from the state, because the state is very actively encouraging these types of facilities. I have spoken with my successor about this. He's done a lot of work on the siting agreement, uh, for the current applicant. Now, of course, that's no guarantee that that would be approved by either the planning commission or the Board of Supervisors. Nevertheless, we do have to have those things done. One of the issues that we are still talking about, and remember, uh, Mr. Wright is, has preserved duty this week, so that's why he is not here. But one of the concerns is making sure that whatever we pass is not so aggressive that we run afoul of some of the limitations set forth in the state code pertaining to how much revenue we can recover. Some of the things we have talked about involve, you know, what is the floor of, you know, what we would collect. His concern, and I think it's probably a fair one, is that, uh, you know, we need to make sure that whatever we pass is in keeping with what the state code provides. One of the other issues that we have talked about kind of conceptually is, you know, just because I'm such an optimist, uh, we're, we're going to have a glut of solar power options. And when that happens, utilities are going to go to the providers that can provide them the power for the least amount of money. Makes perfect sense. A concern that I have, and that Mr. Wright and I have spoken about, is the prospect of a facility, whether it's Rampahatic Electric Cooperative or whomever it might be, saying, well, because they pass along this revenue-sharing cost, it's going to be, you know, a couple of nano-dollars of additional cost, but they're going to use those facilities. The point being, don't depend on these facilities to be operating at eighty to ninety percent of capacity all the time. They're going to get the power where it is least expensive, and that means that in those circumstances, they may not be using the facility that is built here. And so what Mr. Wright and I have talked about is ways to anticipate, uh, those types of problems. Now, the obvious issue is when we were, I think, lulled into some complacency about the machinery and tools tax, it was because we had not considered some of these other issues. For all of those reasons, I think it does make sense to go down the avenue of the revenue-sharing just because we can at least pass that and have something to make sure we, you know, not run afoul of the state code. But the other part of it is trying to build in some incentives to make sure that this facility is built and is act, i- if any facility is built, is that it is actually operating. Uh, we know about some of the opposition that this is likely to have at any facility in the country, uh, uh, you know, in the county, um, you know, regardless of whether it's along Route twenty-nine or if it's, you know, in Etlin. But, uh, the idea with these types of proposals is make sure that it is going to benefit the county economically.
Thank you. Good summary.
That's, that's my only comment.
Any other comments, questions?
Are we speaking of that, this particular project or just the ordinance?
Any, well, maybe any project. And Mr. Snyder, since you bring that up.
It would be funny.
I think the occasion that this potential application presents us is an opportunity to test our ordinance. And other, it's, it's easy to pass things without giving any thought to how it's going to work in the real world. This is an opportunity for us to take an opportunity that has presented itself to us and make sure that the ordinance we pass will in fact work for us.
Okay, so then, and maybe I'm, maybe I missed it, and maybe I just, so we were back to where we were, they were, they were going to give them the option to give us a hundred thousand dollars per year. Is that still part of this? Is that part of this?
And let me, I, I think I understand the question.
Okay.
There are two components of this. There is the ordinance itself, and there is the siting agreement. They're, they're related, but they are two separate matters. The siting agreement would be an agreement that we reached with whomever the applicant was, you know, in the context of the special use permit. The ordinance, however, and the way the ordinance is passed, um, as it relates to revenue sharing, would be a different matter.
Okay.
In other words, if this project is not approved, or if we don't reach a siting agreement, then the siting agreement that Mr. Wright has been working on goes away. We'll come up with a different one for later. On the other hand, whatever ordinance we pass is going to survive that application, whether it's accepted or rejected. It would be the same ordinance, unless the ordinance is amended, of course. It's the same ordinance that would be used, you know, for subject with applicants.
So that sign agreement is on a case-by-case basis?
Oh, yeah, that is correct.
So the state gives us the option of the revenue sharing, the way we have it written?
That is correct.
Yes, so the state gives us that opportunity, uh, everybody?
Well, it does, but...
So we have, we have to decide at the time of selection, but this ordinance gives us the option to do one or the other?
It depends on how our ordinance is written. It depends on how our ordinance is written, and sitting here, as I recall, I think it is optional.
We don't say anything in, you mean, this, right, it's good. Right, right. Because this is the only thing that addresses any kind of money in our ordinance.
And if revenue sharing is obviously, I mean, from a revenue point, is, is better.
If we adopt this, we would, we would have both options on the table if something changes in the future.
I believe that is correct, but I do want to double check. That has always been my understanding.
That's, that's, that's right. We could choose either or.
And if something changes with the state as their, whatever happens, then we might need to review it. But until then, we have what they have. I mean, in other words, we are taking advantage of the options they give us.
And subject to some of the idiosyncrasies that Mr. Wright and I have noticed in the ordinance. In other words, there's a, the way it's written, there's a limitation on how much money you can get, you know, from a provider, and we just want to make sure we're not running afoul of that.
That's a state thing, though.
Well, it is a state thing, but the problem, if it is that we pass an ordinance that is considered void, or where that is violated, then that means we don't get to enforce our revenue sharing ordinance as it relates to that project. That's why we're gonna be very careful about this. How's that for a wet blanket?
There you go. Yeah, especially considering we're on somewhat of a timetable right now with the possibility of this July the fifth, um, hearing.
Well, we, we've got some time.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to, and, and remember, some of this would be addressed in the context of a citing agreement.
Yeah.
As well, but having an ordinance, uh, in place on this, you know, so that we're not scrambling as we are to some extent now, um, to make sure that we, you know, have our, our code, our, our code ordinances, uh, current.
What's the timeline difference that's gonna be between the, between the ordinance vote and the?
Just speaking on this, and Mr. Weaver reminded me, um, this is an agenda item for the next Board of Supervisors meeting, which is this coming Tuesday, and what we're anticipating the Board of Supervisors will be discussing is whether to hold the public hearing on this that we just talked about. And again, that gives Mr. Wright several more days to, um, try to determine the cleanest way to do this.
So, potentially, assuming the board goes that direction, we would be looking at this on the June joint meeting?
I think it's the, I, I think it's.
We've already advertised it. I mean, it's, it's in the paper now, so June seventh. And this is an ordinance that about five or six different counties have utilized, so it's, we're just making it for Madison's. Again, you know, I mean, uh, it just gives the option to use that in the citing agreement. That's all.
One of the great insights into the laziness of county attorneys, um, I, I, I'm not gonna mention the counties, because I see these people at conferences sometimes, but, uh, one of them lifted an ordinance from somebody else. They did not take the originating county's name out of it. They advertised a hearing, uh, in one county for a location that was in another county. It was all cured and everything, but it, it just, as I said, a lot of people find that funny.
A lawyer joke there.
I'm just grateful it wasn't me.
Uh, any other question or comment on this? Okay, very good. Again, let's see, Ligon, you just wanted to kind of preview these two cases, so rather than me reading them.
Right, on this one, Mr. Weaver, uh, just, he, he was gracious enough to, we've just been so busy, uh, trying to get things ready for, uh, the hearings that are coming up, that he had, he's in a huge rush, so, so we gotta get a few more documents from him. That's the garage. Uh, and the last one, um, that, you know, this is Louth Callen, so, um, we are working on a citing agreement, and I think we will, we'll have all that done, so we'll have plenty of time to have everything done, submitted, to review by the next workshop, which is the seventeenth, or twenty-first, twenty-first of June. So, everything should be done, uh, for a citing agreement, uh, that you can review, and, um, all, all those good things, the next Plan Commission workshop, so move forward for, for July fifth. So, other than that, that's it.
Okay, where's this piece of property at on Shelby Road?
Let me see here, fifty-five, forty-two, eh?
Just before you get to the.
Uh-huh. Okay. Okay, I know where it is.
All right.
Okay. It's near the, near the transfer station. Uh, I was reminded that we didn't ask for public comment on the ordinance. Does anyone here want to make a public comment about the ordinance proposal? Thank you very much. Okay, all right. Well, that would be appropriate now, then, I think. Uh, Ligon, you were, did everything else?
No.
Was that up for discussion at all, or?
That, that's just a.
No, just FYI, so y'all know.
Since we've been talking about the solar project a little bit, uh, it, it came to my attention on Friday, as I read the information that Ligon was sending out, that we're still waiting on, uh, documents to come in from the applicant, you know, and so the hearing's been delayed. And that's enormously frustrating, but, uh, it has brought my attention to, uh, I think something that ought to be addressed that would serve the public interest well and future projects going forward. Um, I went looking for the written process for the applications on the website, and I couldn't find anything. Maybe it's there. I can dig up most things. Couldn't find this. Could find it for a lot of the neighboring counties, but I think that if we don't have a policy that says this, we ought to implement it. But I think when somebody applies to either have a change of zoning or a special use permit, they ought to be required to submit all of the documents that are required by the ordinance before it goes on the calendar for a workshop or a hearing of any kind. It makes Ligon's job a lot easier, because he can make informed decisions, he'd have all the documents there, and have a chance to review it. Once everything's good in, it can be scheduled, and there should be a minimum period of time that the documents are submitted before it goes on the calendar. So, Ligon, Plan Commission, and the board, and the public have adequate time to review the documents before we come sit down and have a meeting together. And what's happening now is, a lot of times, something will come in a day or two before it's posted in the evening, and we're all scrambling to read and understand these things, and to, you know, really be able to illustrate concerns and get items addressed, you know, before we sit down. And you can't tell me that sometimes it happens that we don't get here, and we're trying to read it for the first time when we're sitting here. That's gotta happen in some of these, you know, hundreds of pages of documents that comes in here, and I don't think it serves our county well. Once all the documents are submitted, it gets on, it gets on the calendar, everyone has a chance to look at it when we get here. If we need something else, something else comes up, they satisfy all the conditions that were in the, uh, what the ordinance called for the studies and all the stuff that they needed, and we need something else, again, there needs to be time between when that thing is submitted, when we have a chance to read it, before it goes on the calendar again, and we need to confirm to those dates. The applicant can't meet those dates, there should be a time in which these things expire, and they would start the process again, because that way it motivates the applicant to get things done in a timely manner. And if the moment doesn't get there, it's around. And I think that's in everybody's best interest. So, that's all I have for y'all tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Some good points there.
Well, Stephen, and I'll speak to that point. If I'm financing, and I have my financing in place, and you push me off, and I've already paid my fees, and I gotta do it again, I'm not gonna be a happy camper. It's all about the dollars and cents at some point, too.
Yeah, I, currently, uh, I, I can't quote you what part it is, but there's, there's already, at some point in the procedure for submitting applications, in fact, the solar application has a specific section about it, but for all applications, there's a section that says they must have all of the required documentation before they should, uh, well, before we consider the application. I think maybe the point here is we might want to consider requiring that earlier. If we're gonna have two workshops and then a joint session, it might be worthwhile to require that the documentation be presented at one, at the workshops.
Well, I, I think one of the issues.
They should just have a workshop, and they don't have everything.
They don't have, yeah, that's right.
And then they come to the next workshop, and they still don't have everything. They shouldn't even be at that second workshop. They should be told to bring their stuff or stay the hell home.
I think you just made his point again for him, yeah. Any other comment on the comments?
Yeah, I, yes, think that kind of part of the issue is the public, so we don't send the ads, people don't know about it until the ad, you know, they get a letter sometimes. And because we do joint meetings, you know, it's not like maybe a lot of counties do the, they've separated their plan commission and, and board meetings, where you've got a plan commission meeting one month, and it forwards to a, you know, to a board meeting the next month. So, our meetings, unless you're watching our website and coming to the meetings, you know, you're not necessarily gonna know, um, so from a public, sometimes I hear that criticism, but in reality, I mean, we send the notices like law requires. Yeah, as far as the process goes, I mean, in this particular case, I mean, I think, you know, we, we, we've had the, these citing agreements and those things, but, I mean, solar is a little bit different, that it does require some outside studies that other things don't necessarily require, um, and, you know.
They are specifically listed in the ordinance.
Right, right, right.
And so, and I, I think, the, the point here is, and I think we've got substantial agreement in this, waiting until the, the joint meeting where we have to vote on it, and they still don't have everything, we can avoid that if we require all the documentation that's required by our ordinance at the workshops before the joint meeting. See, we, we've been, we've, this is not the first time that this solar project has done this. They have yet to provide all the documentation that's required in the, in the ordinance.
They would have to accordingly.
Well, that, that's not the point. The point is, how can we do any proper deliberation and make a decision without the documents there?
They're here, aren't they? Aren't these right here?
No.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what do we miss?
Have, have they sent us an economic impact study? Have they sent us the visual impact study? That's just two of the things.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've copied on emails everybody that what we need from them, so, I mean, I, I can't.
I think there was a bunch of questions.
And they've, they've been told several times, Jonathan clearly explained to them, this is the ordinance, these are the sections.
I thought that's what this particular workshop was not just for, but I thought there was a lot of.
Well, the, the goal is to have all that, you know, by the June twenty-first, I mean, you know, but.
Are we gonna see these documents at our next workshop?
Yeah, that's, that's, that is what we're shooting for, but, I mean, if they don't give them to me, don't give them to me. I mean, I mean, we, we surely have told them what we need.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know whether I'm one or not, but I was a teacher for twenty-five years, so I can project.
You can project, yeah.
It's not a problem. Uh, I'm Tina Weaver, I'm one of the owners on the, um, Springbok Farm Solar Project. This has not been two years, we have been working on this for five years. We were asked recently not to come forward currently. Um, we have all of their, their studies, and Ligon has gotten all of that. We were asked to wait and to postpone coming before you until you could get your machine and your revenue sharing in place. So, Lou Callen, and we talked, and we agreed that, you know, we, we certainly wanna work with the county, we've done that. As we looked at your ordinance, uh, Yoder came back with, please do not put the trees on the interior of the fence, but the exterior of the fence. So, we came to you with that, um, suggestion. This is new for everyone, as we're working through this process, and so it, it's a lot to learn from both sides when we're the first. So, I just, I wanted to clear that up, that, that Lou Callen was ready to come for you tonight, and, um, we were, we were asked to wait until you got your revenue sharing in place.
Ms. Weaver, my comment was not directed at y'all.
And, and I didn't take it personally.
My comment was directed at the people, the contractors, because we had a bunch of questions for them. We had him on the phone, and he could not answer those questions.
Well, and that, they couldn't hear, I mean, that, the last meeting was, um, not very successful on either side, I think. So, they will be in person for the rest of their meetings. They've decided that that was just absolutely not acceptable.
Okay, we're getting, so we're getting two stories now. You say they have everything lined up and ready to go.
My understanding is everything is ready.
Okay. And they've given it to Ligon?
That was my understanding, so.
Have you seen all of these documents?
I mean, I think there are a few odds and ends that we needed still, I mean, I think that, so that, that economic, but, that economic, uh, statement, but that's fairly simple to do, I mean, my, 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 my issue is that the citing agreement was, you know, I can't, I, I, I need some help writing it, and I'm getting that now, but I just can't do everything. And I, you know, I can't, you know, so I'm getting these documents, I think we will totally, that's why I recommend it, that I don't wanna sit in here and get blasted for not having everything.
No, see, it's not.
You know, so, that's, that, that's why we're waiting, 'cause I wanna make sure, 'cause I wasn't totally confident that we're gonna have the citing agreement totally done. I wasn't totally confident that by June seventh, you know.
Let me, let me give an example here. We just brought up this amendment, uh, proposal. That became necessary, because at no point did we see an economic analysis from the, like, Louth Callen. They should have given us that information. They're the ones that are supposed to know what the state codes require. I mean, it's asking a lot for the county, uh, staff to be able to go into the Virginia State Code and find out these things like that eighty percent exemption that they start with. And that, if they had given us the economic impact statement, as they were required to, I mean, we had what you and Brian put together, which was, was helpful, but they didn't meet there, and as far as I know, they still haven't. Have you ever seen it from them?
No, I haven't seen anything on that yet, yeah.
Have you seen the visual impact statement from them?
That I know they're working on right now.
Okay, they're working on that, okay.
Right. But that's not. I know, I know they've, they've got someone doing the, you know, I mean, the visuals.
I know I, there's, there were at least four things, I remember.
Right.
I know I'm forgetting a couple of them.
I, I know, maybe, maybe I'm viewing this, um, maybe we're not talking even about the same thing, I'm not sure, on the, the, the economic feasibility. I, I remember when I was visiting in Buckham, Buckingham, um, they were the ones who studied the tax implications and whatever themselves, not the company. So, their people did that.
Yeah, but our ordinance requires that the company provided.
Well, I wasn't, I didn't think that that's what it was about. I was thinking, I didn't think the, that's on us, to me. How it's gonna impact us?
The ordinance is written that they are.
So, what, what does it say? Economic, it only says it economic, what does it say?
Yes, yes.
Um, I'm going back to my March fifteenth email, so, the applicant shall submit an economic cost benefit analysis, which, uh, describes estimated increase in property tax revenue, sales taxes, other taxes, locally spent construction dollars, estimated construction jobs, estimated permanent jobs, and costs associated with the project's impact on roads and other county infrastructure. That's just qualifier number three. Um, the view shed analysis is, is another mentioned by Chairman. The viewshed analysis is another mentioned by Chairman Carpenter. The decommissioning plan is also submitted by them. That comes to legal for approval. There has to be a surety bond and everything set based on that. So there is a lot of things left that come to Ligon. So it can be a complete, I wouldn't say application, or at least a, well, complete package where you ought to review per the ordinance, and I'm reading right from fourteen dash nineteen dash three, conditions for the establishment operation of a commercial solar energy facility. It says these requirements are required before issuance of a special use permit.
Right, now see, that, what I'm saying is that what you read there, I thought this part of it, with the tax implications for us, would not be included in that economic feasibility. We didn't mention that specifically. We mentioned all the other things that would impact the county with jobs and, and that kind of thing. But this thing, I assumed was our responsibility to see how we were going to be.
No, ma'am, I mean, obviously...
I mean, that's my opinion.
Obviously, we want to do our due diligence, is why we brought in our commissioner of revenue. We met with Mr. Webb, myself, I believe Supervisor Yao as well. So we're checking the numbers, it's the trust to verify, right? But the ordinance requires the applicant to submit all these things. So we can run our numbers, but they are to submit that.
Does it say exactly that, or it says all these other things that were part of the economic feasibility? You didn't read this. I mean, I don't remember it being quite so specific on this one thing.
I do not have our ordinance in front of me right now, but my recollection of it is that it places a burden on the applicant to give us this information, which we evaluate. Our evaluation means precisely what you're talking about in terms of making sure that the applicant is not selling us bill of goods. That's why we go through these analyses and that's one reason we need these things in advance so that, you know, the county staff can make a decision rather than a knee-jerk reaction with a room full of a hundred people to determine whether this is in fact going to be a viable option for the county.
These items, Mr. Legg has sent this over to Luther Callen, I've seen that email. So he has asked for these things from the last, I think, workshop or whatever we had. They know the condition, so it is on the applicant to submit that for our ordinance.
However, there, it would be a little tough for them to do a comprehensive calculation without an ordinance in place, without our, without our ordinance in place, right?
The revenue part, that's a fair portion, a fair point, Supervisor Yao, the other...
They could do it on that, yeah.
Correct, they, they can do the estimated construction, the jobs, the permanent jobs. Those are different factors they can do.
Oh, yeah. I said comprehensive, that's, that's why I put that word in.
That's what we were thinking, that's what I was thinking.
But they can do the revenue share, they have the state code just like us, they can run that.
Yeah, but maybe we wouldn't charge fourteen hundred dollars a megawatt. Maybe we would, maybe we want to be like Louise and say, hey, come here and we'll only charge you nine hundred dollars a megawatt. How's that?
That is fair.
See, that, 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 I think, that's a...
But it's still the applicant that's required for the ordinance.
There's, there's evidence that they have at least considered that part of the application, though, because they requested a fifty percent reduction in the machines and tools taxes.
That, that is correct.
So they're aware of that, they just didn't make us aware of anything.
This is...
See what you did, Al?
No, to go, to go to Tina's point, this is a first for all of us.
Yeah.
There's been us kind of behind the eight ball on this application or this, this application tonight on this ordinance change. Does seem like we're a little bit far behind the ball. This case was in front of joint boards a month ago. I think it's the responsibility of all of us sitting here, including the members that aren't here tonight, to let Luther Callen go through and with this first application, do all the due diligence involved so that they can have a fair shake at whether or not the Planning Commission recommends to the board and then whatever the board's ultimate decision is. They should have all the documents in place prior to. I think tonight, the statement saying, well, we've been asked to postpone, good lord, they're still missing documents as our ordinance states. It is a learning curve on both sides, but we do have to go through and do the right thing and that is provide enough due diligence so we can vote on this in a fair way.
And Mr. Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, to your point, the best way to make sure the process works is to make sure that at the outset, the application is completed.
Okay, have we beat that to death enough? Does anyone have any, any additional? Yeah. Maybe I better check once more, any other public comment? Okay. In that case, can we have a motion for adjournment, please? Move and second it all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Danny. Yeah, everybody did. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.